Again there. Good evening. Councilmember Shane McFarland has our prayer and pledge this evening.
You'll bow your heads. Father, thank you for this opportunity to be here, Lord, that we get to do the work of the citizens of Murfreesboro. Help us have clear eyes to be able to make the decisions that we need to make, use wise judgment and discernment, and help us keep the thoughts of all of our residents in our mind. Lord, be with us and bless us. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council Wednesday, May 25, 2011. And tonight we'll be doing budget reviews and some regular business, but first I wanted to recognize our Human Resource Director, Mr. Glenn Godwin, who has a special announcement and recognition. Mr. Godwin.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. I'm pleased to report that our positive employee enrollment for benefits was a great success, and we can attribute that to a great deal of teamwork amongst all the city departments and leaders. And certainly the employees paid very special attention to our requests to get information together for the new plan year. I am importantly, though, pleased to recognize three individuals from my department, and Pam, Chris, and Karen, if you'd please join me at the podium. I'd like to recognize these three ladies for their hard work and extra effort. Come on up. I'd like to recognize these three ladies for their extra effort in making sure that every employee question was answered, every location was specifically confirmed and met with, and each, if you will, question that was new or different as related to our employee insurance and benefits was properly taken care of. And so I would like to just make sure that Mayor and City Council understand the extra effort that was put forth for this to happen, and I'm very proud of all three of them. So I wanted to recognize them all with a special certificate. Thank you. And in our department, we also recognize extra effort a little differently in the FISH method, so we want to pass out some special awards in terms of making their day, and that relates to our internal customers, our employees, we consider to be our internal customers, and so I wanted to just make sure we had this chance. So thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
We're certainly, as a council, proud of all our city employees, and we realize your front line, and during this occasion, you've been front line with our own employees. So that's a particularly wonderful and outstanding job, and we certainly recognize that, and thank Mr. Godwin for bringing that to our attention, and Ms. Russell, his main assistant, and thank you very much for all the hard work that you do with us each and every day. Thank you. All right, council members, you have before you some proposed budget department to review, and it begins with Murfreesboro City Schools, and you have a separate budget notebook, and I believe Ms. Director Gilbert is here. Director, Ms. Gilbert, Ms. Dr. Director Gilbert.
Mayor, I've been called many things. Thank you so much.
Yes. We used to call her Linda Arms. We don't call her that anymore, but Director, Dr. Gilbert is here, and Mr. Gary Anderson, who is, I believe, the Finance Director for our city schools, and also, I believe, you're still Chair of the Williamson County School Board. Is that correct?
Vice Chair.
Vice Chair of the Williamson County, so doubled up expertise. So you see it from our side, and you see it from the other side, too, Gary, so we're proud you're here, too. You may have some opening remarks in the presentation, Dr. Gilbert. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Let me say it's a real pleasure to be here before you to present our budget. I can't tell you what a privilege it is to work with you, certainly appreciate your support, and also what a privilege it is to work with the teachers and the principals and the parents and the students of Murfreesboro City. It's an exciting time in our school district. We've seen a lot of changes this year. We have moved to professional learning communities, to a spirit of collaboration. We've turned the organizational triangle upside down so that the focus is first on children, and I think that you will see that reflected in our budget. And I could stand here all night and brag about the school district, but I think that I'll turn this over to Mr. Anderson and let him present the budget.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Gilbert.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. Thank you, council. This is one of the most exciting times of the year for people in finance. We love these times. We may be verbally challenged, but numerically gifted, but we love this. So I thought I'd go through a little bit about our budget with you very quickly. This is a balanced budget. We are using about $400,000.
Excuse me, just calm down, Ms. Wright. Calm down. Calm down, Ms. Wright. All right, go ahead.
She gets excited over numbers.
I know she does, and Mr. Crumley's just about as good. He really is.
It's nice to see the smiles up there on the finance people this time of year. We're using about $411,000 of our fund balance to fund this budget, and the main reason behind that is, is the ARIF funds have dried up now. There's no more federal ARIF funds available to us, so we're having to use those to support the budget as it is. Included in this budget is a 1.6% raise for all of our employees. We also have in here, we made tremendous strides in our infrastructure over the past few years, and we're continuing with that. Our infrastructure that we've worked on in the past and are continuing on is roofs for our schools. We've done a lot of roofs, and we're continuing to do those in this budget. Our energy efficiency projects through new lighting, through new energy efficient heating and cooling systems is continued in this budget, and we will be working very soon on an additional loan with the State of Tennessee, similar to the one you approved last week on energy efficiency for HVAC units at one of our older schools. We've updated our technology networks, our computers, and our securities, and we've continued on that path. And we've updated our academics by adopting in this particular year two textbook series. That's extremely rare for a school district to do that. Typically, you adopt one series a year. Every six years, a series rotates, but we are adopting two in this year's budget, and they are math and our reading, and they cost a total of $1.224 million for those two adoptions. With all of that and what we've done in the district, as Dr. Gilbert has explained, we are asking for the city council to please continue our level of support that you provided for us for the last seven or eight years. We're not asking for any additional funds. We're asking for the same level that you have done in the past so we can continue the good work that Dr. Gilbert is really bringing forth to the school district.
All right.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Are there questions from the council regarding Murfreesboro City School Budget as it has been presented? Do you have an idea where this decrease in enrollment that you mentioned, I know it's minor, but where it will be coming from?
The decrease in enrollment, what we've done is we've looked at the studies that we've had over the last two years, and we have been basically a flat district. And when we made the budget, we were down a little bit in students. The good news is, as of last night, we were within three of our projected enrollment for this year, so maybe I'm being a little too conservative by dropping it, which that's great news, but we anticipated some drop because the housing market wasn't moving and starting up, but we see now that it is, and we're hoping that actually we'll be able to beat that number. I was trying to be conservative on our estimates on that so we wouldn't be short on our funds.
And the number of teachers is up, and the number of nonlicensed staff is also up at the same time?
Do you want to?
Yes, the number of teachers, and as far as the number of students, I think that what we'll see probably is we have built in some additional teachers in case we do see that growth because we know that the children don't come in nice little packages of 20 necessarily in a grade level. So I think that's the reason that you'll find that.
Other questions from the council?
Dr. Gilbert, we, I know I ask this every year just to get anticipation, but do we have any future expansion that we see on the horizon as far as additional schools in any areas that we're targeting?
Not at this current time. We, of course, are watching the southwest section of the town to make sure, but I think that we are looking at some growth. We may be looking at some tweaks in zoning at the end of this year, but we'll see how the growth works out. We are, though, very cognizant of that.
Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Dr. Gilbert, I see our pupil teacher ratios are basically the same what they've been in the past, if I recall.
Yes. As a matter of fact, last year, we had the lowest pupil teacher ratio that we've had in quite a while. I felt that was really important. I did talk with our principals about, you'll see just a slight increase in pupil teacher ratio, but they did not feel that it would have very much impact this year if we did that because what we have put in place are some additional support. For example, we have interventionists now that are using very effective strategies with reading and also in math. We expect to see an increase in our math scores this year. Probably reading will take till next year, but because of that additional support, because we do have social workers now that we've never had before, our teachers and our principals really felt like that if we did need to increase the pupil teacher ratio, and it's only just a small amount, that it would not impact student learning.
Other questions? Your percentage of the total student population this year is dropping, possibly because of a growth in enrollment in the county schools. Do you have that number yet in your mind? Is it 16% or less, something like that, total population of our city schools?
Yes, we're under 16%. It's dropped the last few years a little bit. The county, as you know, is growing a lot faster in the county areas than the city itself, so it has dropped. It's not where it's really affected us to the point of making it a critical budget issue, but it has dropped slightly, yes.
And Bellwood still has no, it has all pre-K.
That's right.
And how many of those are federally funded, or have those funds been affected by the?
No, what you'll find there is you will find a combination of local funding, the government's, excuse me, the governor's lottery.
State funding.
State funding, and also you'll find some title preschools there. We don't foresee that to change any at all. We have right now in the budget, the state budget, the preschool is still solid, and we foresee that to be the case this year. We're seeing a tremendous benefit from our preschools. Murfreesboro has really been on the leading edge of that, and typically, when the state wants to showcase a preschool, they will come to Murfreesboro. I think that the recent study that was done by Vanderbilt that proves the benefit of preschool will help with any impact on state funding in the near future at least.
So that contradicts a little bit the study that came out a couple of years ago that said somewhere in between the third and fourth grade, all that.
Right.
Help went away.
And I think, well, I think what's interesting about that is if you look at the purpose of preschool, it really is to level the playing field for our at-risk preschools, which is what the governor's preschool state funding is about. So I think it's really kind of a misnomer to say that it levels out. That's exactly what we want. We want those students who have started behind and would have been behind to be at least level with our third-grade students, and that's exactly what's happened. So in Linda Gilbert's opinion, I'd rather they not use the term "level out," but just recognize the increase that's been there from pre-K up to third grade. Otherwise, those children would not have a chance in many cases.
Other questions or comments? Well, if not, let me say congratulations on your first full year's tenure, I suppose, and I also want to commend you on behalf of the council for the cooperation that you do with so many of our city departments through the year. There's never a minute when we ask the Murfreesboro City Schools to do something that you don't either allow us to use one of your facilities, or use your resources, or have you cooperate, coordinate with us, and get along with us. And it's certainly a pleasure to have you as a partner in all the activities we have with our Parks and Recreation Department, with our Police Department, with our Fire Department, with all our city departments, and I just wanted to mention that and say thank you.
Well, it's a real pleasure to be working with these folks. I really appreciate their support, and they're called legality. It means a lot. Thank you.
Good. Any other questions before I let Dr. Gilbert down, sit down? This is not an undertaker.
Yeah, I was a little worried about who's following us, as a matter of fact.
All right. Thanks, Ms. Anderson, Dr. Gilbert. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
And speaking of letting down, our next review is for Evergreen Cemetery. Are there any questions regarding the budget for the Evergreen Cemetery? It's in your packet. All right. If there are no questions, then we'll go to the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department. Mr. Kurtzner, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. I placed on your desk a revised budget. Last year, the council asked that we reformat our budget to that, similar to the city's, and I have high regard for Erin Tucker's skills and abilities after trying to reformat our budget in the way she's done. I know the numbers are sound, but our formatting needs some tweaking, but this year's budget is $35 million. It's necessary to support our mission and our critical activities as public water, sewer, repurified water, and a stormwater utility. On page 17, there is bullet items that gives major, I think, issues in the budget that I've tried to point those out. On page 18 and 19, there's summary tables of the revenue expenses. One of the things I use this year, too, in what was handed, just handed out to you, is snapshots from our Trailblaze model. Trailblaze is a model that's maintained for us by Jackson Thornton, an accounting firm, and they take, they have 10 years of our history, and then they can project out 10 years into the future, making some assumptions, so we can play what-if issues with that. So that's what you see in terms of the graphs. You see the historical trend, and then you see what the future trend would be based on the percent change assumption that we would make. So it's a great tool for us to be able to use, and so I provided snapshots of the major items in revenue that they provide for us. Basically, the budget is balanced. It did require additional revenue of about $964,000. To meet this revenue requirement, we recommended that the allowance for our 5/8 meters be reduced by 50 cubic feet from 150 cubic feet per month to 100 cubic feet per month. Basically, what that means is that somebody using over 100 cubic feet will pay $3.04 more a month across the board. So everybody's paying for an additional 50 cubic feet.
So that is a residential?
That's everybody.
And how would it affect residential, generally speaking, 100% of your residential population? Do you expect 20%, 25% to go over that? Is there a way to anticipate that?
It's $3.04 for each customer, and then there's a table, let me see if I can find it, for different consumptions. 15? And it lists those.
What page is that on?
No. No, it's page 39. So if you look at that, a bill of 500 cubic feet, I think about 525 was the average of late, they're going to be paying $46.26. That's an increase of $3, and that's about a 7% increase. So the higher up you go.
You're looking at most of your customers, though, then?
Yes, yeah. Most of our customers, there's a breakdown. There's 1,125 customers that use between 100 and 150 cubic feet.
And Joe, before we move on, what percentage of our total customer base? That's in the low, single digits?
Oh, yeah. We have, what, 25, 26,000 customers, so that's a very low. There's about 2,000 customers that are 100 cubic feet and below, so it's a small portion. The majority of the customers, there is 0 to 100, there's about 2,200 customers, 100 to 150, 1,125, 150 to 200, 873, 200 to 300, 2,600, and then 300 to 1,000, there's 13,241. So that would be the biggest segment that you would see, and if you would look at that range, the 300 to 1,000, it goes from about 10% to 3.89%. But everybody pays the same amount extra because they're paying for an additional 50 cubic feet.
Is that the only rate increase that will?
It's a rate structure change. The rates stay the same.
That's what I mean. You're not going up to 5% or?
No.
Okay.
This is in keeping with the cost of service study that we did with Jackson Thornton, and they look at the fair and equitable rates for all customer classes. Is one customer class, for instance, commercial versus residential subsidizing another? And our commercial, industrial, and larger users are subsidizing the smaller user, and so in that, we implemented in 2008 a rate change structure to start bringing that down over time. You couldn't afford to do that on the low end to everybody on the low end like that. It'd be too costly for them over a short period of time, so we've been doing it over multiple years. Each year, we take about 50 cubic feet off of that and go down, and then it generates additional revenue because everybody pays for that extra 50 cubic feet. Eventually, we'll get to where it will be zero as an allowance, and there'll be a flat fee as a minimum, and then we will look at the rate at that time to see what would be needed, up or down. Probably, I would suggest it would go down some unless we come up with some pretty large revenue requirements in the future. But that's the strategy that we're using now. It's through the American Waterworks Association, M1 Manual. It's a manual practice that a lot of utilities are using now, and it gives you a good comparison of what rate should be for your different customer classes.
All right. Vice Mayor. Excuse me, Joe. Vice Mayor.
Just tell me what the, maybe you did, I didn't grasp, hold it. What's the average increase for an average residential customer? Is that what I'm?
$3.04.
So that's the increase? Is that water and sewer? Is that just?
Yes, that's water and sewer.
Okay. I didn't know if it was just a water bill or is it not an additional charge for? Not all our customers, we have a sewer bill on.
Correct. This is water and sewer. It does not include tax on the water. You know, that would be, what, 9.75% of the $3.04.
So the tax would be added to that?
Some of our customers, we have sewer on, but not water on. Is that correct?
Most of those now are water and sewer, are CUD.
That's what I'm talking about, CUD water.
There's about, I think there's about 13,000, 14,000 customers with CUD that are sewer.
It just doesn't affect them, right?
Yes, it affects them. They will pay, they won't pay the $3.04. They'll pay, you know, the sewer charge for 50 cubic feet. It's 334, half of 334 is what they pay, so it'd be of that. That's what basically people would be paying. To give you an idea, because I'm always concerned about affordability, and I'm sure that the council is, I looked at some statistics in the fiscal year 2010. The mean family income was $65,200 for our area. On the low end, it was 1,9550. On the very low end, I mean, the very low end, it was, or the low end they consider is 52,150, and it's considered affordable when your utility, water and sewer, is 4% of your mean annual income. And at a 510 cubic feet is what the average was from July 2009 to June 2010. That was $549 a year, and if you look at the mean family income, that 4% of that income, that's $2,608, and if you look at the very low, it's $1,304. So we're well below what rate affordability is considered when the government looks at different of their programs in housing and other things. at different of their programs in housing and other things. With this increased rate, we'd be looking at about $600 per year for water and sewer. For, then that's 525 cubic feet. Then that was as of July, from July 210 to March 211, is the statistics that we put together for that.
You talked about a budget increase of, what'd you say, 900 and something, did you say?
We needed an additional revenue requirement of about $900 and some odd thousand dollars, $964,000.
And what is that from?
That basically is from the revenue generated from the rate structure change that we'd go to pay for that additional revenue. It goes toward, it's balanced now. It's a balanced budget with that rate structure change. Some of the things that have changed was that we're paying additional fees to the city for services that they're rendering. Over the years, we've always paid for legal services. And now we're going, we've transferred the payroll function from our office to Human Resources in City Hall, and then we'll be paying them for those services, as well as for pension administration for our employees, which are on their pension plan. And that's about $120,000 of additional revenue to the city. We did, in looking at our goals for increasing our customer service efficiencies and bettering it, we are looking at, and in the budget have, credit card processing fees. We have web portal expenses and lockbox service expenses that will help us to improve communication with our customer and electronically allow people to pay bills, check by phone, and things like that. So we are including that in this year's budget. And that's what increased the administration and the customer service area the greatest amount. We do have capital outlay expenses of $11,929,000, and that's our principle and interest on the loans that we have. Rather than go through item by item with this, I'll be happy to answer questions you have or point me to where you would like to discuss, and I will try to answer your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschner. Are there questions from the council?
Mayor.
Mr. Gilli.
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, just a couple of things I want to point out. In addition to making up the difference in the budget, I think taking the approach that the Water Board has also fosters, facilitates conservation of our water resources.
That's correct.
Does not.
The old rate structure used to be a declining block. The more you use, the less per unit you pay. Ours is a single fee, and that also is for water, you know, induces water conservation from people because it doesn't, before, if you used a lot of water, it didn't penalize you as much as if you use it when it's a single rate.
The other thing, and I'm glad you brought up, what's added into your budget is looking into, and going to make realization online and credit card payment and that sort of thing. Can you give us a timeline for that? Because right before I hung up the phone coming over here today, there was someone calling me asking when their water bill could be paid and those type of media.
That is a good question. I would hope within the next six months. I've got the RFP prepared for lockbox services, and the next would be for the statement billing and the like. Our contract expires with our current company that does statement billing in January. And I'm looking for a company that not only prints bills and mails them, but would also do the web portal for us. And so I'm getting some information on that to put an RFP out, and I'd have to have it by January.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions?
I've got a couple, Mayor.
Mr. McFarland.
Thank you. Mr. Kirschner, thank you for the new format because it really helps it for the council to be more user-friendly and really go through. But I was going through all of our spreadsheets and trying to see where we've had increases and decreases, and two categories stuck out to me. If you could maybe give us some?
Sure.
There's on page 8, 11, it's administrative and engineering, $10,912. It's the Smith, Setman, Reed Engineering. We were over budget this year by $82,000, so we've increased that category 900% for this year, so that's sort of what that is.
That is miscellaneous engineering expense that Smith, Setman, Reed does for us. Example would be, we had to, you know, if you remember, we had to redo our sewer use ordinance. They assisted us in doing that. They assisted us in evaluating and presenting to Tennessee Department of Environment Conservation the local limits. There was some analysis they had to do with it and such. You know, I anticipate we will have to do a drought plan coming up in the near future with that. It's really an allowance. There's nothing right now that is, other than the drought plan that we have for sure that we're probably going to need. But there's a lot of miscellaneous things that come along as we need engineering service. And it couldn't, it says Smith, Setman, Reed there, but it couldn't necessarily be someone else, other engineering services. I probably need to change that description more to have other engineering services that would be in there because we use the engineering firm or firms that provide us the best toolkit for whatever project that we have to do.
The other one is on page 10, 11. It's land improvements. It went up 15,906%.
If, that is detailed. That is a capital improvement. And if you go back in the back of that packet, there's a 11 by 17 that's in landscape, and land improvements is, it'd be page 1 of 3, right after all those spreadsheets. And it's detailed there in that we're going to paint the house hill tank, we're going to clear easements, we're going to do some carpeting, repair a back gate, we're putting water quality control panels at remote locations, and we're re-roofing the old sand filter building at the wastewater plant. These are non-recurring rate-funded capital projects that we try to fund each year rather than borrowing money to do these items. But that details all rate-funded capital for that. And I provided these in the back because in the body of the text, it really gives you generally, you know, the summaries, and I thought there might be some detail you would want to see. So every single line item in our accounting is accounted for in these spreadsheets. So you've got everything that you can look at it to your heart's desire. It's got everything in it.
Other questions? Mr. Lyons, if you could briefly mention several items. I noticed that there's some administrative support that the city does for the water and sewer department, and there are some line items that, where we share expense in order to keep from duplicating with water and sewer. I mean, would you just briefly mention those types of services?
Be glad to. There are a number of places in the city budget where there is a cost allocation that occurs. So what happens when we've got a cost allocation is that we've got a department that provides a service, and they lend those services and support to other city departments. As Mr. Kirschner mentioned, we've got our Human Resource Department that handles pay and benefits. Because we're going to handle that now for water and sewer, it's only fair that water and sewer pay their fair share. The city school budget, they don't employ an attorney, but they use the city's legal department, so they make a contribution to the city to offset the cost of providing legal services. And there was an article in the paper today about the VA golf course. The VA golf course has two full-time employees but receives significant support from the director of golf, from the administrative assistant, from the golf course outside operations superintendent, and then another employee that pays all the bills. So when we have a standalone business unit that is benefited by another area, we have them pay their fair share.
Okay. And that's customary and certainly saves those departments from having that type of administrative expense.
Avoids the duplication.
Right.
In fact, we are, our Human Resources Administrative Assistant Lynn Rahil is retiring, and we're not replacing her, but transferred that function to Human Resources. So, you know, we had a savings, and so we're paying Human Resources to do that function for us. And it just makes, you have one entity doing it, and it's the expert at it, so it makes for fewer errors in being consistent.
All right. Any other questions regarding the budget? I noticed, Mr. Kirschner, on line 80, or sewer charges, that's on the page, before page 19. I guess so, it's page 18. Line 80 says sewer charges. You're expecting an increase in revenue from sewer charges. Is that attributed to the $3.04?
I'm sorry, where are you at, Mayor?
On page 18.
Okay. The revenue summary?
The revenue summary, line 80, says sewer charges, and those have gone up.
Yes, that is, there's two items there that would be sales-oriented. Sewer charges is the monthly sewer fee that's paid, and then below that, you see there's a, on line 83, an operation and maintenance fee. And that's basically the 90 cents per 100 cubic feet. So those two items make up the sales portion of revenue that we have for sewer, in addition to some other miscellaneous things in there for ammonia, surcharges and things. But those, that's where the increased revenue came from.
Is that the $3.04?
It was the sewer side of that. And then above, on sales to customers on line 63, that is the water side of it. That gives you?
It's about $1,004 in expected anticipated new revenue. Fuel costs, what, how are they affected in your budget? Where are they?
Fuel costs, we get with, or the fleet services provide us with details on the usage, and we use the average rate that was provided by Joey Smith and apply that to that. That's incorporated in a lot that there. We do have, in our old format, we have a transportation element, and I can probably give you a number, but it includes other, it would include other transportation costs as well. But it's, fleet services cost and transportation costs are $439,000 annually for the departments was budgeted.
What line item of those?
Well, that's my old.
Is there not a line item?
You'd have to go to each. It's in each of the different categories. For instance, if you would go to the, and I'll tell you what, I will provide you with that breakdown because that's really good to want. I like to see it by department, water plant, wastewater plant, but I also like to see it by category, utilities, transportation, and that. And I will provide you with a breakdown of that so that you can see that. But what you would have to do is go into those spreadsheets in the back, which is every line item, and go into, and look for fleet services or transportation accounts, and that's where that cost is where it lies.
What about the repurified water sales? That's on page 25 of the newly presented document. What's your outlook for the next several years based on?
I think.
On what you have currently available as capacity? Let's put it that way.
Well, right now, we're starting to see buildings use it for auxiliary use in their buildings for flushing toilets and the like. There's two that have gone on. And we're going to need to be more reliable in providing that water. And doing that, we're putting another million and a half gallon tank that will be coming to you at your next meeting to approve, that we will construct to give us that reliable source and pressure that we need to provide that. I would hope and anticipate it grows, but there's not a good way of projecting that. Right now, the city's probably our biggest user in where the revenue comes from for repurified water. The golf course, the avenues is the other large one. They're all, you know, Medical Center Parkway is the city, and it's all irrigated, the Siegel Soccer Complex, all those are irrigated with the repurified water. It is our hope, though, that that would grow over time, and we may look at rate changes to that over time as people get used to it and see the advantage of it in what resource that it is.
And the total yearly revenue from that?
It's about 20, 25,000.
About 130?
No, it was $23,022 in June 210, and we're projecting 23,793. If you look on page 26, the.
All right.
The Trailblaze snapshot.
So there's no accumulation, no yearly accumulation that I see?
No, this is, this is the, since 2006, and remember, the first year, it's free. No one pays for it the first year, and then after that, they start paying. But there is like a $5 flat fee each month regardless of any usage.
And the stormwater, I see you've got a tab on page 77 regarding stormwater, the total stormwater fees and?
It remains the same, $3.25 per single-family equivalent. We have relocated or reclassified one of our water and sewer employees into stormwater as a water quality technician. We are also participating with the city in some other stormwater-related expenses that they take care of. So that's another way that we use that money back toward the city general fund for services they provide for maintaining our NPDS stormwater permit.
So your proposed revenue is 2.5 million on page 78? That's your proposed FY '20?
2.5, 2.5 million.
Right. And the expense you're expecting?
That's above, it's 2.5, it's the balance.
It's what?
That's above it, listed the labor through total stormwater expenses.
So you're, okay, all right. And so the fund balance from that, there's no fund balance, is that?
There is a, I'll give you a fund balance. I don't have that. I'll have to get you what that fund balance is. But there is a fund balance that we've accumulated over time that we use for capital projects. For instance, Leap Avenue, Belloy Lane, Detention Pond, some of Manny Avenue, some of that money goes toward that, but I will get what that fund balance is.
And to pay back some initial expense we had in the?
Yes, we have paid the city back.
Oh, okay. So we're finished there?
Yes, we have paid everything back. So what accumulates now is what I call working capital that will allow you to do those capital projects in lieu of borrowing money. It, I think it's a couple million dollars is probably what fund balance we have right now.
All right. Council members, other questions or comments regarding Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department operating budgets that's been presented?
Mr. Kirschner, are there any new employees, new positions?
Yes, there is a business manager that is proposed and outlined on page 17 of our, basically that business manager is, we're looking to change a lot of our business process. We have a couple key management personnel that will be retiring shortly, and we want to bring someone in to learn our process and also help us. to bring someone in to learn our process and also help us to, to transfer from the, our current Cobal computer system to all the new software we'll be doing. But we have reclaimed, we've reclassified some, we, some of the maintenance construction workers are reclassified as utility locators. We have, will reassign some operators as crew leaders and, and chief, or crew leaders and lead operators for, at the plants. They take on the responsibility with the state that you have to have someone in responsible charge at the plants, and that would be that person taking on the full responsibility for running that plant. And so, those are being reclassified. There is a, I believe, a, a crew leader, we anticipate another operator retiring that would be replaced by a crew leader.
I see, I think I see it here where you're going to be able to, in the future, to take credit card, debit cards?
Yes.
For payment of, of your bill?
Yes, sir.
When do you think that may be onboard?
Hopefully by January. That, that would be my anticipated timeline, that, in looking out there, especially on our statement billing that expires in January, there's a lot of people that bundle services. Some of them do web portals, some of them do bill printing, and I'm trying to find a niche of companies that would do all the electronic processing and, and there's web portals that they'll do the, all the online payments and everything, and they'll also do your, your voice IVR, where they'll have voice interaction and call out to customers if they're late or whatever. So, we're trying to get a bundle that, that's realistic, that someone can bid on and meet those requirements. And I have a gentleman that's provided me some information that might help me put that together, instead of just doing straight statement billing and, but we'll bundle some of those services. Especially the web, web portal, I can at least see that someone would be web portal that would do third-party credit card processing for us.
Going back real quick to the stormwater fund, and I think this was '09, that this, was it '08 or '09 this came about?
This is his third year, I believe.
But, and that's based upon single-family units?
Yes.
But our largest customers in that fund are going to be the people who have the most impervious?
Correct.
Parking lots, things like that?
Correct.
If we get to where our fund balance is continuing to climb up, is there a point that we say this is what we want our fund balance to be, where we actually could lower that fee?
That, that would be something that the board and the council could consider. However, what I've been saying is that the regulations are getting more strict, and they'll be looking at for us to do water quality testing and more expense to that. But there could be a point where we, we would, could, might consider that. Certainly, we don't want to have an excessive fund balance. We'll, we're very conscious of that and want to use the, the money wisely into good purpose. And it's, it's to be used toward the impaired streams and restoring those to the uses that they're designed for.
I think, you know, the council gets the phone calls about some of the drainage issues when we have, have wet weather, so that's what that fund's going to be there for. I know there's going to be plenty of projects that we can queue up, like Lea Avenue.
Yeah, and I think that's, I agree. When we look, I think it had on the fund that we were looking at $900,000 of capital improvement projects, and we've got a $2.5 million budget. But I would just think that as the, as the, the general fund on that increases, that if we get to a point that we find whatever's an acceptable level, and as impervious area continues to grow in the city, that those collection fees can, well, hopefully, if we see areas like that that are continuing to grow, then we're going to be collecting more money, that we may get to a point to say, okay, our fund's good, let's, let's look at maybe, maybe lowering it.
You know, what I'm seeing, though, is the capital projects are coming now, that we do that, for instance, that, you know, we, $900,000 into Lea Avenue and some of those, so you're getting some hefty capital improvements that, that, that are being used. And we're trying to, you know, allocate those as best we can when it's appropriate.
Sure. And there's no argument here on, like, Lea Avenue and some of our areas that we've tried to improve, so just to be able to answer to people that are paying that monthly fee, which on, on some acreage is a huge fee, that we can say that we're, we're in, in good shape.
I can give you more detail on that stormwater budget, too, as far as capital improvements and things that we have. I, I don't have that in here as I do water and sewer, but I will, I will get that.
One of the, one of the projects, we just got close to finishing, Old Fort Park, so that, that was one of the...
All right. Other questions? If there are no other questions, thank you, Mr. Kirchner. We appreciate the good service and the good water that you provide for us. I know many days seem to be difficult, but you do a great job, and certainly it's not a job I'd like to have, but I'm sure there's some folks like you who, like Gary Anderson, revels in numbers, you revel in water. So, thank you. Thanks to your department, too, for the good work.
Members of water, as opposed to...
All right. This time, we'll go to the general administrative budget, pages 55 to 62. Mr. Lyons, do you have any general comments regarding the general and administrative budget?
Just a few, Mayor. Actually, the general admin budget is actually going down, both in terms of actual dollars budgeted and number of employees. Let me speak to a couple of those. The reduction in the number of employees in this area is the reason why we're seeing the budget decrease. The city manager's office, for instance, would go from five employees to four. We had an administrative assistant retire last year, and we did not choose to fill that position. We're going to manage with the one administrative assistant we still have, she's doing an outstanding job. We are going, we're recommending that we relocate the public information officer to the cable TV department. Our cable TV department does a great job advertising and communicating what's going on with the city, and we feel like it makes more sense to take all of the employees that provide those services and put them in that one location. That will help us, we believe. We also are recommending the addition of a service excellence coordinator. We really have three main things that we were going to focus this position on, would be our service excellence program, that is our customer service training program of working very closely with our HR department to make sure that we touch every single city employee with our customer service training. Also, see this position as someone who could help us with a streamlined permitting system for non-routine projects. Now, we've still got some more work to do to define that program and get additional input from Mr. Whitaker and Mr. Adelot, but we know we have certain projects that want to develop in our community, and creating a one-stop shop, we think, would be very effective. We've used that on a couple strategic occasions, and it has worked very well. And also, social media, that's one of the goals that we put in this year's budget, is to continue to get input from our community and provide information to our community and having someone responsible for all that. Now, that service excellence coordinator position would be advertised in-house, and we would not backfill that position, so there would be no overall change in headcount to the city, but would be an additional person in the city manager's office. And additionally, there's six IT-related positions that would move into the new IT department, which I believe is the next budget that we're going to review. So, a couple of the things that we're really going to focus on this year is an IT master plan. The city has some 700 computers, give or take, plus printers, plus network equipment, plus mobile phones, plus copiers, and right now, that has been decentralized in terms of who oversees that and how we manage it. We've really grown to be the size of a community and the number of pieces of equipment out there, that we think it makes more sense to put that under one roof. But we want to start with, you know, developing that master plan, so where are we going with the city's communications and infrastructure for information? As Mr. Kirchner mentioned, developing the ability for electronic payments is something eventually we want to see the city grow into, but coming up with a new software platform for the city is going to need to precede that step. So, the city of Murfreesboro would like to take that same step in providing that assistance and convenience to our residents, but we want to get our software system where it's in a position to handle that. Redesign the city website and really continue to focus on communication. Mr. Crumley and myself try to work hard at providing information, not only to the council, but to our employees and to the community in general, so that'll be something we certainly want to continue to focus on. Two other quick mentions in what's in the admin budget, and then I'll be glad to take questions. The City Hall Energy Efficiency Grant is underway. If you drove into the parking garage today, you saw some of the storage units. We're getting ready through a federal grant to replace the heating and cooling system here at City Hall. We think we're going to be able to pick up some savings in our electric bill here in this building. And then also, we'd like to transition to an electronic agenda for the city council. Right now, there's a lot of work that happens to produce the paper packet, so we've got some one-time costs for a tablet-type computer, but we would like to transition where we provide you your, your council packet electronically and something, while we're doing that, that we'd make that same council packet available to the, to the community and the residents on the city website. So, we think that will be good for information for our residents as well. Mayor, be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Kirchner? I'm sorry, for Mr. Lyons? Still on the last item, forgive me. In the general administrative department?
I have a couple of questions, Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Sales Harris.
Mr. Lyons, by moving the cable TV group, does that decrease their budget by moving them in with this fund?
No, well, there's actually two moves there, Ms. Harris. Let me make sure I cover both of those. The first one that I mentioned would be Mr. Schaffner's position. He's the city's public information officer and grant writer. Mr. Schaffner routinely deals with the media, he works on our city newsletter, and it really kind of came to us this year as we were developing budget, that while Mr. Schaffner is providing information to the community, we also had our employees at City TV who are providing information to the community. They already collaborate a great deal. They're meeting on a regular basis, so that if there is a story that the city wants to tell, that they're getting together. So, when that program or issue comes up, we want to make sure that we put that on the city website, we want to put that in the media, we want to put it on Channel 3, we want to put it on social media. So, the thought is by moving that employee into the same department with the other employees who provide that same service, it's going to make more sense of having them under one roof. So, that, you know, employee and their costs go from the city manager's budget over to the cable TV budget, but there's no, no overall change to the budget. Now, there's a second change that you may be referring to, and I want to make sure I cover that piece. There are going to be, there's going to be a requirement that the city takes some of what we in the past have considered special revenue funds that are going to now have to come into the general fund. This is one of them. The senior center is another one, the golf fund is another one. Ms. Wright may be able to speak more to that, but we're going to have to move those funds which were separate from the general fund and put them under the general fund. It's not going to change the revenue and the expense in terms of how we traditionally budget, it's just going to be located in the general fund as opposed to a different tab in your budget document.
And that's a general accounting change, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Which requires that?
Which requires that. The auditors are going to make sure, they're going to have to check a box that we did that and noted in the audit that we made that move.
We're actually making that move as of the current fiscal year, so that will actually be, when we redo this book, those funds are going to be part of the general fund and no longer a separate fund. The revenues received by those funds are not required by any outside source to be considered only usable for those funds, and so this is a good time to go ahead and bring those into the general fund. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wright.
All right.
Mr. Lyons, a couple more questions. The position you have open for the customer service representative, when you, you're going to post for that job, right?
The service excellence coordinator?
Yes.
Yes, I would advertise for that in-house.
In-house, okay. Now, when you advertise for that, we're not advertising at all outside, right?
No, ma'am, that's not my, my, my plan at this point.
Okay, when we advertise for that, oh, do you have someone right now particularly in mind for that job?
Well, I'm going to advertise and, you know, give employees an opportunity to apply that would meet the, the requirements for that, that position.
But when, when you all have an opening in the city, when you have someone in mind that you want to put in the job, do you let the people that are, the other applicants that are going to apply, let them know that you have someone in mind for that position already?
I would post the position, and then whoever would, would like to apply that met the minimum qualifications, we'd take those applications, and then Mr. Crumley and I are going to sit down, look at those applications and, you know, select persons for, for an interview.
No, I, I guess I'm getting that sometimes, I know where I work at State Farm, when we post for a job, sometimes they already have somebody in mind that they really think that they're going to put in the job. And under the job description, they let the people know a candidate is, we have a candidate in mind. So, as far as the city, when we post for jobs, when we have someone that we think we want for that position, do we let the applicant know that we have someone in mind for that position? Do we?
It's going to be advertised, and we'll see who, who wants to step forward. I know, and that, the reason why I'm not advertising outside is I'm confident I'm going to be able to fill it in-house.
No, I understand it's going to be filled in-house, but I'm saying, when we post the job, not only this job, but a job in the city. For instance, we have an opening, I'm interested in the job, you're already thinking about putting Chris in that position. So, when you post for the job, would you put there, we have a candidate in mind? Will we, so we won't do that even if we think we have a candidate?
No.
How many full-time employees do we presently have?
That is on...
You wouldn't probably get the job anyway.
I'm not interested in the job. You said the wrong word, job. I'm not interested.
The full-time positions in the budget that we're in right now, fiscal year 11, has 784 full-time positions. The budget that you are reviewing right now has 785 positions. It's a net increase of one, and that one position would be the IT director for the new department.
How many part-time employees do we have right now?
How many part-time? We've got a chart on that as well.
I don't know where they are.
It's in your supplemental binder.
But that's okay, it's, the number's not really important enough. That's okay. My, I guess my question is, when I was looking at the budget in the various departments, the part-time as opposed to the full-time employees, I have a concern that everyone is getting an increase. The full-time employees are getting 3.5%, correct?
Yes.
Now, the part-time employees are not getting that same percentage, is that correct?
No, ma'am. We budgeted across the board 25 cents per hour increase for our part-time employees.
I would like to see, and the reason, let me preface this statement. First of all, I would like to see all employees get a 3.5% increase, and I'm saying that for this reason. In doing the math, if I'm correct, all full-time employees are going to get 3.5%, the part-time employees a possible 3%. When we're talking about employees for the city, I don't personally like to see us make a difference when we do a rate increase, a pay increase. I look at all employees as being equal. I would like to see equity across the board in our system. When we're looking at the city, you go on the internet and you see Murfreesboro, this number-one place to live, or this love place, wherever we fall, and I think we should treat all employees the same. I don't feel like we need to, this is my personal opinion, the part-time employees don't need to feel like they are less more important than the full-time employees. When you look at part-time employees, really, they are more flexible. If you really look at the bottom line, they're more flexible. And as a city council, guys, and mayor, I would like to, us to give the 3.5 across the board.
Ms. Harris, I don't have off the top of my head what the cost of that would be. I can tell you the 25 cent an hour increase for part-time employees was approximately $50,000. The city does use, it looks like we've got close to 400 part-time employees, they do work a significant amount of hours for the city. There's no question, I agree with you, Ms. Harris, they do an outstanding job. I know the city's, you know, been very suc- I know the city's, you know, been very successful in recruiting for part-time positions. I think, you know, we've not had any trouble attracting both a deep pool as well as a very talented pool when we go to fill these part-time positions. The addition of the part-time increase was about the last thing that went in the budget this year. We were certainly trying to make sure we were taking care of all the major pieces, and this year's budget, no question about it, was difficult to put together. It certainly had a lot of challenges before us, and we, you know, had made a priority in our budget this year was to provide the, you know, the pay increases for our full-time folks. We felt like we could try to provide a little extra increase for the part-time folks, but at this point in time, Ms. Harris, I could not begin to tell you how much a 3.5% increase would cost for all those part-time employees. I certainly work with Ms. Wright and run those numbers, but I suspect it's quite a big number.
I'd like, if you don't mind, I'd also like to add, because Rob didn't mention on this, that is not something we have historically done. In the past, when departments have had trouble hiring for a part-time position, they've come to the city manager and asked for the pay to be adjusted at that time so that they are more competitive with the market. And because we haven't been able to do that the last couple of years, that was one reason Mr. Lyons was looking to do something. But historically, we've not done that, and if we apply that to all positions, that might put some positions really out of being in balance with the market.
Yeah, for instance, in the Parks and Recreation Department, there's almost $1.6 million in part-time labor expense.
I don't think it would be a great deal of money. To me, it'd be an administrative nightmare putting 3.4% on $6.25, or $8.25, or $10.25, because then you're going to be $10.64 and 300s. That, and basically, part-time is hired on what the market will bear.
And one of the positions, yeah, Ms. Wright mentioned it. We've had a part-time driver in our senior center. They drive a passenger van, and they were making less money than the part-time drivers for Rover. So every time Ms. Burt would bring a bus driver onboard, and there was an opening in Rover, they...
Go to Rover.
They go to Rover. So we leveled out that pay in this year's budget, so it was the same function, and we leveled that.
Administratively, it would be difficult. That's all I'm saying.
I understand that. I'm just, I guess you have to have been there to know what I'm talking about. We're still talking about city employees. And seemingly, and I'm learning, we're finding money to do a whole lot of things with, and we're talking about people that are taking care of the city, whether they are part-time or whether they're full-time. I just don't agree with that, because I've been in positions before where, and I know we said the market, and I'm hearing you saying that, you know, if these people leave or whatever, it'll be no problem filling these positions. And I agree with that with the economy. I would say, if a full-time leaves, it's not going to be a problem. I just don't like showing the difference in our part-time people and our full-time employees. You know, we do the figures, and a lot of times, we find money to do things with. I would just like to see us do a straight 3-point. When was the last time, before this increase, and this is before I came on the council, of course, did the full-time employees get a raise? What year was that?
Full-time? Well, they got a $750 one-time bonus.
No, not the one-time bonus, or an increase in salary. When was the last time?
It was two budget years was, there's not been a pay increase for the two budget years.
Okay, at that time...
If we're in '11, we did nine.
Nine.
At nine, it would be eight.
Okay, at that time, did the part-time employees get the increase? Get a raise?
Yeah. We may have adjusted, so I don't know the answer to that question. I suspect we looked at some of them...
We adjust some without adjusting them all.
But see, that's...
I don't believe we've ever done it across the board like that.
That's what I'm talking about, equity.
But probably, possibly, in the year that our city employees didn't get a raise, some part-time people were hired at a higher rate than the year before because we couldn't hire anybody. That's the, kind of, the concern. I understand exactly what you're saying, but part-time people generally are part-time, and some may not recommit to the city to work next year or any other year. That's why, generally speaking, it doesn't, it doesn't follow that way. But Mr. Gilli had a comment, and I'm sorry I interrupted you.
Mayor, just a potential solution to look at, Rob, for what Ms. Harris is bringing up. Can you tell me what the average hourly wage for our part-time employees are? I know it ranges back and forth.
I'm looking at recreation. You've got everything from a concession worker at $7.50, you know, a stopwatch employee for $7.75, all the way up to officials for youth football for $27.75 an hour. So it is quite a range, so...
But that $27.75, and this is, we've talked, that's not that that person gets that for an extended, it's per game.
That's per game. That's not a per hour.
Correct.
What I was going to suggest, if you could look at potential numbers of coming up, the ones that get paid by the hour, the ones that get paid a stipend, if you will, for per game, I think that's a little different thing. Come up with perhaps what the average is and figure out what 3.5% of that average is, and let us know what that number would be versus looking at each one individually, and perhaps say that the average, that what we're going to increase their pay by the hour is what that average is, but no less than 25 cents an hour. Does that make sense? And we may not be able to do that, but what I'm saying is, let's say the average, the average across the board is $12 an hour. We figure out what 3.5% of $12 an hour is, and that's, so it would be a 36 cent raise, but if there's somebody that's going to get less than, it wouldn't be less than a quarter, but no more than 36 cents, and just do that across the board.
And I'm also saying, you know, we've had a storm to come through, and, you know, we've had departments working overtime, and I realize all this. And when we all go home, we feel safe. When we have bad weather, snow and whatever, we go out, the streets are clean. I mean, you know, we tell our employees, you know, "You're doing a great job," and I read these letters complimenting them, different ones, and that's great. You know, you say you, like my dad used to say, you know, "You say you love me," but he hugged us also. That's where, if we love our employees, which we say we do, and I'm not saying we don't, we're going to have to show some love here financially. And to make a difference in part-time, I guess, I'm on the other side of the track. I was raised on the other side, okay? I know how they feel. I know how it is to feel like you're a little less valuable than you are. And I feel like that's how the part-time employees feel. I've had some of them talk to me, and I can feel what they feel because I was raised feeling like I was less valuable than other people. So I can feel that. And being a part of the council, it's one thing I would like to see, is us to have more equity in things that we do. And being a member of the council, like all council members, I hope feel that when we are elected in these positions, we are the voice of the people. We are the voice of the people who cannot speak for themselves for fear of losing their jobs, or making their jobs harder, or whatever. I just want to see us have more equity. I mean, I have that strong feeling. So if you can do, like Toby said, let's look at something different, I really feel strong about that.
How much did you go up this year, Mr. Lyons, on the part-time?
Flat 25 cents per hour. We had looked at a number of different options. You know, as I mentioned, this was about the last thing that was added back into the budget. One of the options we looked at initially was our permanent part-time. You know, we've got a number of different needs that are filled by our part-time employees. Some of them are permanent part-time and have been here for a number of years. We've got other employees who are more seasonal. Maybe they help out with leaf pickup and are just working part-time. So even within our part-time category, we have different, you know, categories of our part-time employees. So we had even looked at, well, let's look at our permanent part-time employees, the ones who are here year after year, versus those who may just come with us for three months during the summertime. That became difficult to try to arrange, but it was certainly a consideration. And at the end of the day, you know, more, as Ms. Harris mentioned, from an equity standpoint, we went and did the 25 cent across the board, obviously on a percent basis. That helps out the folks who are making less per hour than some of the ones that may make, you know, $15 or $20 an hour. So there's a number of different ways to look at this.
And that's a good phase at the end of the day. That's getting home with me. At the end of the day, these same people are going in these same grocery stores, paying the same amount for bread and milk that the full-time are. And not only the part-time people I am not talking about, I'm talking about all of our employees. You know, and we do the market studies, the salaries and everything based on market studies, and that's great. But, you know, a lot of times, when we do market studies, we tell them what we're looking for, and that's what they give us in these markets. That's how I have seen some, not all the time, but I'm saying, you know, we're comparing ourselves maybe to Johnson City, or this, that, and the other. But, you know, what we are finding ourselves doing, we are training these people on these jobs, and they are leaving us, going to other places because they're making more money. Then we end up having to train people again, and that's killing our budget when we can go ahead and, you know, reward these people financially straight across the board. I think we'll have happier employees, and happier employees do a good job, do the best job. When you have disgruntled employees, that's the kind of quality of work we're going to get. This is one of my pet peeves, guys. I'm sorry.
I'd just like to, I just make a quick comment. And it's not that I disagree with you, Ms. Scales, because I think, I can't speak for everybody up here, but I think all of us have been part-time employees from, at one point or another, whether it be running a weed eater, or working concession stands, or what have you. But, Mr. Lyons, if I'm wrong, tell me, but I think the majority of our part-time employees are seasonal with Parks and Recreation. Is that...
That's the largest, largest department.
Working ballfields, and lifeguards, and referees.
Many of them are high school and college.
That's the one.
So it's a summer job, in essence. And I don't disagree with you, but I think that, you know, as far as the pay increase, you've shown us material that we've, from the market study, and I can't speak to other cities, but I have several employees who come up and say, "Hey, we understand where we are. I've got friends who've lost their jobs. I'm happy to be where we are, getting the benefits we get." And I'm sure that not everybody is happy. We all want to make more money. But I think the information that you've shown us shows us that we're one of 12 cities that you surveyed that were given a higher raise than anyone in the state so far. As a matter of fact, I think there was a news story on Channel 4 that showed how well that the raise that were given. But as far as part-time employees, I don't disagree with you. If we need to do more, I think that's the fair thing to do. But in essence, there is a differentiation between part-time and full-time employees. Full-time employees get benefits. Full-time employees get retirement. Full-time employees get vacation days and comp days and sick days. So I think it's a, although I'm with you, I think that if we're not fair to the employees and, or to our part-time employees, and that we have staff, or we have Mr. Goodwin at the Parks and Recreation Department who's coming up and saying, "I can't find lifeguards. We're not paying them enough," then, hey, I...
We have increased those part-time pay rates when we hadn't been able to recruit. They do a great job. There's no question about it.
I'm with you, but I think that you get into a really, you know, we've got $10 million in healthcare costs so far this year, so is that something that we need to look at part-time employees offering healthcare? I mean, that's what I'm saying. I'm not advocating that, but I'm just saying that there's a difference between hourly part-time employees and the classification as a full-time employee, so...
I'm just talking about treating our employees right. We have a, we have a great city, and we need to reward these employees.
Well, let me offer a suggestion, because...
Full and part-time.
I understand, and I hear your concern, Ms. Harris. Let me offer this as a suggestion. Before we would, you know, in order for you all to provide direction, you need to understand how much is it going to cost. I don't have that number here this afternoon, but I will be more than happy to have it calculated and sent back out to you. You know, you still have three readings of the budget to make changes, and what I'd like to do is prepare what that cost estimate would be so that you can evaluate that.
Compared to what you've estimated already?
Yes, sir.
I don't think it's going to be very much money. All that, and if there's any other administrative expense, and if there's any other limitation because you can't hire somebody after a 3.4% increase and you have to increase it more, I mean, what are we, where are we going to go after that? That's another concern. Because if you can't hire somebody for $7.25 and you have to raise it to $7.75, that leaves it over 3.4%. So then you violated what you said you were going to do. So I'm not sure it's administratively possible. I certainly understand giving people a raise, but I don't, that's just the administrative cost. As the state budget would tell you, you better figure out what the fiscal note is before you decide what you want to do. I'm not sure it's that much more money because I don't think those salaries are that high. Mr. Gilli.
And Mayor, and I think Rob's right. I think he needs to be able to bring us back the numbers so that we can all talk apples to apples, so to speak. But again, I think one perspective you might look at, Rob, is from the administrative headache that the mayor's talking about, if we did come up with either a median or a mean, and let's say it came out, just using the number I threw out, let's say it came out to 36 cents as opposed to 25. If 50 is what you've included in the budget now, that would roughly increase it $24,000 to make that work? Is that, and I want to give you the chance to bring numbers back, but just thinking out loud, that's kind of what we're talking about, perhaps, if we go that route?
Yeah. Let me, we'll run the numbers and get them out to you.
But before we have the public hearing and the three readings, so we can look at it on paper and see the feasibility of things.
Thank you, Mr. Gilli. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, come in. You know, I think we all agree with what Ms. Scales is saying. We know one really feels like they probably make enough. We all want to make more, and I think we all feel like our employees deserve more and should make more. You know, we only have, the pot is only so big. And, because I met with Mr. Lyons, was it last week or this week when we met with a city employee? You and I met?
Uh, this week.
And, you know, and we had, there were some concerns about pay, and we talked about different things. And we brought up a point that I'd like for you to maybe talk about, what the benefit package is worth for an average employee, or for a top employee, or a middle employee, whatever. There's a lot of things that we pay for the employees that I don't know if we actually realize what that package costs us, or costs, it's costing our taxpayers. And that's the thing we have to remember. We do represent city employees, and they do a tremendous job, and they serve our taxpayers well. And I think, I know we've all been out in the real world, the economy. I sell real estate for a living, and I sit across the table from people daily who have lost their jobs, have lost their automobiles, who are losing their homes, and their homes are not as valuable as they once was, and times are tough on them. And those are the very ones that we have to go to for everything we have on our desk. This city doesn't really produce a product that we out here selling. We're selling services, and those services are being paid for by our taxpayers. And we have to remember where our money comes from. Our money, we all get paid from our citizens and our taxpayers, and that's who we owe, that's who we owe our allegiance to. But our employees do a great job, and having said that, I agree with you 100% that we need to pay them all we can pay them based on a fair and equal market. No question about that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments regarding the General Administrative Department? A couple of things you mentioned, Ms. Scales-Harris. If you're aware of any studies that we've done, that we have told people how we want them to come out, I think you'd need to bring those out publicly and let us know which studies those are.
No, I'm just saying studies in general, sometimes. I said sometimes.
Well, if you are aware of any study, that you know where we have told somebody to do something, that we've hired to do a study for us...
No, you misunderstood me, Mayor. I'm sorry. You misunderstood.
Explain then, one more time.
I'm saying, sometimes when we go to these consultants or groups, we give them criteria of what we are looking for, things that we are looking for, and sometimes we get results based on what we're looking for. That's the statement I was making.
And generally speaking, this council's the one that sets those priorities.
Right. I understand that.
Yeah. For the pay plan, for instance, Ms. Harris, the city council set the goals. They want pay to be 12 months out in the future. They wanted pay to be at the higher 60th percentile than the average, and when the council set those as goals, which were to be, you know, increase employee pay, that is what the consultant went, delivered the data, and ran the analysis. So there was no predetermined outcome about, you know, we wanted X. We set a general policy statement... We set a general policy statement, and the consultant followed the policy direction that was set by the council.
Sorry, I was misunderstood, Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Lyons, sorry.
If you do have things, that's what we discuss when we do set a policy, or we do set a precedent, to try to figure out what, what kind of information we're trying to get. Because otherwise, you'd be all over the board. The second thing is, Mr. Lyons, if you would get us some, ask Mr. Godwin to get us some turnover numbers by department. I think Ms. Gales-Harris brings up a good point. We certainly need to look at what our turnover is by department, so that we have an awareness of what our personnel policies and our pay, and how we treat our employees, and the resources and the training that they have, what they consider important, and how many of them leave to go somewhere else after we've trained them, so to speak, just the turnover rate, if you would.
I think we had about 34 employees to leave in a year. Nine, one died, and it was nine other positions, I think.
Well, we keep track of those numbers, I'll be glad to report those to you, because it is surprisingly low, the city's turnover.
Do we do exit interviews?
Yes, sir.
So we should know, you know, people leave for different reasons, and it, based on, sometimes it's money, sometimes it's benefits, sometimes it's location, sometimes it's their age, and where they feel like they can move up the ladder quicker. I mean, there's a multitude of reasons why people leave and go to other jobs. It could be family, business, or, there's just a lot of, and if you have that information for us exit interviews, that would be interesting to have.
Even though our turnover rate is very low, we still do conduct those exit interviews, because we want to find out if there is something that we weren't previously aware of, that we can make the adjustment.
All right, thank you. Other questions on General Administrative?
Mayor, I was just gonna commend Mr. Lyons. We took the time back, I guess it was this early year, or it was early this year, or it was late last year, that myself, Mr. Lyons, Mr. Adelot, and Mr. Whitaker went to Florence, Alabama for the day, and Florence, Alabama has successfully implemented a one-stop-shop program. So we spent a couple hours with some of the, or the one-stop-shop person in Florence, Alabama, and found out how that they had streamlined processes within government. And as you know, with the economic conditions, it's not like that it was four or five years ago, where people would seek cities and just come because it was that city. It's very competitive, and Mr. Lyons can attest to that, how competitive it is to attract business to a city now. I think that this piece will help us be able to attract more businesses, which increases sales tax, increases property taxes, and also increases jobs. So, I think that's something that will be a welcome addition.
We've got more work to do to develop the details of that program. For our traditional, single-family house that gets built, the developers that participate in the process here in Murfreesboro, they know that routine, and it runs like clockwork. We have other projects that are either large or non-routine, and that's where we want to really use this person to walk them through the process. And, you know, like I said, I need to get some additional input from our development departments, but we think this can be an opportunity to make it easier for them, provide a higher level of service. Our folks do a great job at working their way through issues, but putting one face in front of the customer that can manage the process, from what we think can be a benefit.
The one comment that the lady made in Florence was that she was surprised at sometimes how people would get a phone call from her, that she would say, I don't need anything, I'm just calling to check on you and make sure everything's going okay, and how businesses were so, businesses and individuals were so taken back, that the city was calling to make sure that everything was going well at their businesses and not really needing anything. So, step in the right direction.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? If not, let's go to the Information Technology Department, 63 to 67 in your book.
Yes. Mayor, this is one of the bigger initiatives in the budget this year, is to consolidate all of our information technology employees. Currently, the city's computers, printers, copiers, the network are managed by employees that are housed in the admin budget, GIS, MIS, water and sewer GIS, and the police department as well. All those folks have done a great job, but it's been a situation that we've added an employee here and there over a period of years, and not really put anybody where we had one employee responsible for managing all of those resources. So we think we have grown to the point in time where we need to bring them all under one city department, under the direction of one individual, which would be the new IT director. So nine employees would be relocated to this new department. As I mentioned, I think one of the first things we would look for this person to do would be to help us develop a master plan for our technology. The city uses a COBOL programming system, and while it's served us very well, it is certainly something that is a little dated. So we see an opportunity to upgrade the city's software. That will be a very large undertaking. We're gonna need to get some assistance in doing that. And having one employee managing all of these resources, we think makes sense for us in the long run. The total budget for IT would be $1,067,000. This is primarily coming from various other city departments, such as admin, where those costs had previously been located.
So you have a graphic information services coordinator, a management information services coordinator, and a public safety...
Correct.
All right. And you're putting all in the same department?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions regarding information technology?
Get rid of one expensive ride, brother.
It's already expensive.
Are you anticipating many consultants?
For the master plan, we think we're gonna need a little bit of help in dealing with the software companies, what's been happening in the marketplace, and then having the IT director here from day one will certainly help with implementation.
Other questions, comments? If not, we'll go to the Legal Department. Ms. McGinnon, do you have about a 30-minute pitch talking about the Legal Department?
Thanks, Ms. McGinnon, we appreciate it. Next.
Cable TV, Mayor?
Oh, I'm a cable, I was putting them in information technology. Mr. Bozeman, my apologies. I thought you'd be happy, but I guess not.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council. The Cable TV Department oversees and enforces the local cable television franchise, and also operates Murfreesboro City TV. Some of our accomplishments from the fiscal year budget 2011. We added a new and improved video bulletin board messaging system to provide and post written communications on City TV. This thing also included an automated weather warning crawl that now shows up on the channel. We began providing live video web streaming of City TV programming 24 hours a day, seven days a week. That's available on the city website. We had over 40,000 views of our archived video web streaming content of meetings and programs, and we received several national government television programming awards. Some of our departmental goals for this upcoming budget year are to provide a way for citizens to share our archived video web streaming of meetings and videos on social media networks like Facebook. We're also consolidating the public information and media information activities. We're looking at making video streaming of city meetings and videos, and accompanying documents available on mobile devices like smartphones and media tablets. We're looking at doing some renovations to the Cable TV offices and to the council chambers. And we're also looking at providing a backup power generator for City TV and the management information systems facilities within City Hall. In the event there's a power outage, we'll continue to operate the City TV channel. Also, the city's website will stay up, and the institutional network will continue to function.
Be happy to answer any questions you might have about our budget.
Any questions for the director of our outstanding City TV, Mr. Bozeman?
Mayor, I might point out one correction. The memo I had provided to you this afternoon that says potential budget amendments, most of these deal with departments you have already reviewed, but the Cable TV Department did have an error. It's going the right way. It was a $40,000 error in the renovation of the Cable TV Department and council chambers. That figure should be $72,500. So you'll actually see a reduction there of $40,000. It was a mistake.
All right, any other questions from Mr. Bozeman? Thank you, Mr. Bozeman. If not, now, Ms. McGinnon, I was just gonna give you a heads up, so...
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that. The Legal Department budget, beginning on page 74, does not reflect any change in personnel or material change in expenditures or priorities. We aim to support the other departments and avoid having to come to you with bad news. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
See the benefit of having staff counsel as opposed to paying by the word?
Are you also gonna do risk management?
Yes, sir.
Why don't you go right ahead?
All right. Risk management is found on page 222. The only, there's no personnel change. The only substantive change in expense is that we do have the additional $256,000 for the excess workers' comp coverage that we've previously come to about. That's a new expense, which would be ongoing. One of the things that this does reflect is, among the finance structures we set in place, are transferring funds each year based on exposures and the different types of claims that we have. This year, because we had a sufficient amount of money in fund balance representing, the amounts have been set aside for auto claims, we brought to you a proposal that does not have funding from the different departments for that auto exposure. This was intended to be a one-year holiday, if you will, from auto insurance premiums. So, that's not immediately apparent from the budget material on page 225, but I did want to hold it up to you. That was a staff recommendation to the Risk Management Committee and the city manager, and it is reflected in the budget that you have. Be happy to answer any questions about any other item in the Risk Management summary.
Is that why some of those revenue numbers are down? Is that what...
The revenue numbers are really sorted by Ms. Tucker, but primarily, yes.
Yes, and you'll see in the corresponding departments for auto insurance, there's a zero this upcoming year.
So that's, it's virtually a premium on...
Yes.
Good behavior in some...
Yes, because we had money from past years that hadn't been utilized. It does reflect, you know, adjustments to the workers' comp, but we continue to self-price that based on both the state averages and the experience in particular departments, so that we can try and reflect good experience and bad in those costs as well.
Mayor, as chair of that commission, I would like to reinforce what Ms. McGinnon said, that the department should not get accustomed to the premium holiday. This is a one-time...
Dividend.
Event, that's right.
It's a dividend, all right. Any questions regarding risk management or the Legal Department? If there are no questions, we'll go to the Judicial Department at this time, and that's page 84 to 87. We have the Honorable Ewing Sellers with us. We welcome you. Good evening.
And Mr. Council. Our budget appears on page 87. Again, no significant increase in amount of the budget, no increase in personnel. The accomplishments on page 85, I would direct your attention to the middle of the page. We have implemented two new night courts each month, and with that, allow the police officers to not have to come to court unless it's on a contested case, and thereby, we hope, will significantly reduce overtime pay in the Police Department. We've also accomplished something that I was very surprised to see, and very happy to see, and that was, historically, the outstanding fines and costs have increased every year until this year, and they've now plateaued off and begun to reduce. So, we're very pleased about that, and are very hopeful that that reduction will increase significantly when we bring onboard the collection agent that's been hired to take those unpaid fines and costs and collect them. So, we have a lot to be proud of in the Judicial Department. Questions? I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Judge Sellers regarding the Judicial Department?
Mayor, I just want to commend Judge Sellers on the two-night courts. I think that's gonna be a really good thing for our residents, to not have to take off work, but to be able to come to the city after hours and not miss work. So, thank you very much for implementing that for us. We appreciate it.
We're looking forward to it. We have half a dozen or so, I think, set for one of our July evenings already, so...
Other questions for Judge Sellers? If not, thank you, Judge Sellers, and we'll go on to the Police Department. That's found on pages 88 to 97. Welcome, Chief Crispin.
Mayor and council members, good evening. A pleasure to be here with you tonight. I'll draw a couple of pieces of information from the budget initially, and then follow that up with some discussion and commentary. As you said, our budget begins on page 88. I would call your attention, I guess, to page 97, where you see the total budget for the Police Department for the year, which is projected at $22,852,597. That does show an increase of about $566,000 from last year. And as you look at the line items in the operating budgets, you will notice that certainly we have some employee costs that's increased as a result of the raises that are projected this year. Some of our employee benefit costs increased as well. The largest single line that you will see where there's an increase is the fuel cost, which increased about $231,000. We are projecting $671,000 this year for fuel. That is our best estimate, based on fuel costs as we perceive them now, and certainly that could change. We hope that's gonna go down. You might recall from some of the earlier information that was provided in the budget in 2010, we drove 2 million miles in the Police Department. So, we're looking at ways, had some conversation as late as this week about the next generation of police vehicles. It's currently under design and expected to hit the market in this coming year. All of the major manufacturers are retooling their police vehicles. Most are looking at more fuel-efficient vehicles, and certainly, we are looking at more fuel-efficient vehicles. And that will be something that we'll continue to work on as we continue into this budget You do have some additions to fixed assets there. Primarily, there are five fully-equipped patrol vehicles, and some detective cars, four detective cars there, and one call-taker station that adds slightly to the cost of the budget. However, those are fairly modest increases as far as vehicle replacements, based on the size of the fleet, and trying to keep those costs down to the best of our ability. Obviously, our department is charged with providing law enforcement and public safety services to our city and its residents and visitors. We have 228 sworn police officers, 32 police fire dispatchers, 20 non-sworn support staff, and 38 part-time employees, including 24 school traffic patrol positions. I know some of this, if not all of it, was included in our annual report, which you all received earlier, and I'm sure you've had a chance to look at some of that information, but I would like to summarize some of it, I think. Because ours is the largest department, we know it's the largest budget that you look at annually, and I think it behooves me to stand here and recap some of the things in our most recently completed year. In 2010, our police fire dispatchers received a... In 2010, our police fire dispatchers received 184,394 phone calls, including 37,929 911 calls. That makes our communications center the highest-volume PSAP, Public Safety Answering Point, in Rutherford County, and that recurs year after year. Officers responded to 91,350 calls for service. They completed 23,976 official police reports, initiated 8,065 criminal charges against defendants, and issued 11,005 traffic citations. Our criminal investigators initiated 617 criminal actions against 276 defendants. That's just detectives. In 2010, as we all are aware, economic conditions continued to affect property crimes, notably burglary and larceny, and they both increased by 5% in 2010. However, personal and violent crimes are the ones that are our most serious offenses and the ones that get our attention the quickest. In 2010, there was no increase in reported homicides. We had five; three had been cleared by arrest, and the other two remain under investigation. We had no increases in robberies, and we had decreases in reports of rape, assault, and motor vehicle theft. One of our goals for 2010 was to decrease fatal accidents by 20%. They actually, during the calendar year of 2010, decreased from 10 to 6, which was a 40% decrease, and surpassed our expectations. Reported arson's did increase slightly. Automated red light enforcement, we've talked a lot about that, but I think that bears a little review, if you'll bear with me. We began that in 2008. At the end of December last year, we'd issued 40,853 citations, 12,000 of those in 2010. The crash data that's been reported from signalized intersections throughout the city where we have traffic enforcement cameras in the second year as compared to the first year of enforcement indicates that intersection crashes decreased from 1,849 to 1,594. That's a decrease of 255 crashes, or 13.79%. Side angle crashes decreased from 677 to 542, a decrease of 135 crashes, or 19.94%. And rear-end crashes decreased from 1172 to 1052, a decrease of 120 crashes, or 10.24%. That trending really matches what we've seen in national studies and in a recent study by the Insurance Institute for Highway Safety, which reminded us that red light camera enforcement programs had reduced fatal crashes across this nation in cities, large cities, where they had implemented those programs between 1996 and 2004 by 24%. Fatal crashes had been reduced by 24% tied to the use of red light camera enforcement programs. I'm proud to stand here tonight and tell you that last week, the Tennessee General Assembly passed regulatory legislation which addresses traffic enforcement cameras all across the state of Tennessee, and they based much of that legislation on what many of them are beginning to call the Murfreesboro Model. Senator Tracy was the Transportation Chair in the Senate and led a lot of that work, and as well as the rest of our legislative delegation. Much of what is in this most recent legislation that will regulate traffic enforcement cameras in the state of Tennessee was drawn right here from Murfreesboro, from the leadership and vision and direction that came from this Mayor and Council. You should be very proud of that and congratulate yourselves. Our goal from the outset was to improve safety at signalized intersections and change driver behavior, and we believe that's what's happened, and we thank you all again for your leadership and guidance. Using state and federal grant dollars, we launched the Gang Resistance Education and Training Program in January of this year. We also assigned detectives to our newly-formed gang unit, and I can report to you tonight that through elementary school educational programs and mentoring and targeted enforcement efforts and arrests, these officers are already addressing the problem of gang violence and gang recruitment in our city. And again, I think a lot of that credit and appreciation goes back to the Mayor and Council for supporting that grant opportunity that became available. I know Judge Sellers has talked about the evening court sessions, and Mr. McFarland just addressed that a few moments ago and some comments to the judge. In conjunction with the launch of those evening sessions, we began our automated traffic citation process on May 16. That was last Monday. Got a sample of what one of those automated citations looks like. I commented to somebody earlier that it almost looks like a receipt from Kroger or something, it's so long. It has a citation at the top, it has all of the information for the driver at the bottom. These are issued by onboard printers in our police vehicles, which interface with our mobile data terminals wirelessly, and some software that we have that helps to provide the traffic citations, some of which is actually voice-activated. I will tell you that we have issued 4,234 traffic citations thus far in 2011. 1,348 of those have been written in the month of May. 683 of those have been written since last Monday, when the automated citations began. Our officers like it. It's faster. It allows them, as I said, to use some voice recognition technology, and I think we're on the front end of seeing some very useful and proactive policing that will come out of that traffic enforcement activity. Obviously, you have a complete department summary that begins on page 88, but I do want to talk about some of your initiatives and some of the things that we're doing there a little bit. Implementation of council priorities for the upcoming fiscal year. Certainly, we want to contribute to safe and livable neighborhoods by continuing our efforts to make Murfreesboro a safe place to live, work, and visit. We want to continue to address quality-of-life issues using problem-solving strategies and specialized units to reduce or eliminate calls at repeat locations, such as our Crime Suppression Unit, our Vice Unit, our Domestic Violence Unit, and our newly-formed gang unit. And those folks are working very hard, and they're doing great work and making a difference in those areas. The budget does have a request in it for some additional supervisory positions for police-fire communications, simply to expand the span of control. We have four supervisors up there now, and it's pretty hard to supervise 724-365 with a limited number of supervisors, so we've requested to add three supervisory positions for that. Otherwise, there are no new positions in this year's budget for police. I mentioned earlier that we had some vehicles in there that will replace high-mileage vehicles that need to be rotated out. We believe our role in the strong and sustainable financial and economic health of this community is to focus on the prevention of crime and creating a safe environment for investment and economic development. And certainly, excellent services with a focus on customer service is a big part of what we do. I think we've attended many of the training sessions that other city employees have attended, as well as some special sessions that were set up just for police personnel. I've had good feedback from those, and I think that training has been well-attended and well-invested in terms of providing great customer service for our citizens and our other customers. I think it's fair to say that the process of law enforcement doesn't always create happy customers. It's hard to make somebody happy sometimes when you're putting them under arrest or writing them a ticket, but we work hard at it. I would say this, the cards, letters, emails, and thank-you notes that we get far outweigh the citizen complaints that we receive. Last year, our internal investigators invested 30 citizen complaints. I'd ask you to reflect for a minute on the copies of the thank-you letters that you all see throughout the year. I don't know how many of them there are, because we don't count those, but it was a whole lot more than 30, I promise you.
More than 30.
Our folks are doing a great job, and they're working hard. I'm very proud of them. We, last year, added a second police radio frequency. That continues to work well for us. You authorized us to begin a teleserve program last year for nonviolent reports of incidents that could be taken by phone. In 2010, 2,746 calls were referred to teleserve, either there for people that walked in the front door of the police building. That averages about 52 calls a week that we did not dispatch a police car to. And that's just an average. Some weeks, it was far more than that. And that program continues to grow. I anticipate that by the end of the summer, we'll have some online reporting that also will add to that. Community engagement was a new goal this year, and we're excited about that and look forward to embracing that at the direction of the Mayor and Council and our management staff. But I have to tell you, I am very proud of our department for the work that we're already doing in that area, and some of that was included in the budget materials, but I just want to hit a couple of those things. We have department personnel that have served in leadership roles in many of our local community efforts that really fit into that community engagement paradigm, if you will. Let me just mention a few. Citizens Police Academy, Community Anti-Drug Coalition of Rutherford County, North and South Manny Avenue Community Coalitions, Patterson Park Coalition, Read to Succeed, the Wellness Council of Rutherford County, Rutherford County Child Advocacy Center, of which General Whitehall and I chair and co-chair as we speak, the Rutherford County Child Abuse Coalition, the Rutherford County Crime Stoppers that we host and spend a lot of time with, and both Adult and Youth Leadership Rutherford. We have done ride-alongs for virtually every graduating class of Leadership Rutherford from the onset of that program, which means a lot of those people have spent time in Murfreesboro police cars observing what we do. Most recently, our Assistant City Manager, Mr. Cromley, who rode a whole night, I think, on midnights and got a good look at all of that. We also do a lot of work with the Youth Leadership Rutherford Program, and we do some work with our civic clubs as well. I'd like to share something with you. Tonight, at 10 o'clock on News Channel 5, they are actually going to air a segment on child predators. And that segment is going to focus and recognize the work of two of our detectives, Wayne Lawson and Jennifer West, who were, you may recall, received an award from the United States Attorney's Office earlier this year for their work in a child predator case where a federal defendant received 180 months in federal custody. That's day-for-day, and I'll let you do the math, but that's quite a sentence in federal custody for this child predator that they were involved with. And the news segment at 10 o'clock tonight is going to profile that and talk about the work they did and give you a little bit of an insight into how a child predator thinks, if you want to be frightened with some of that. But that'll be on the news at 10, and I'm very proud of the work that those folks do every day, doing very difficult work in our community. Now, let me see if I can make this do what it needs to do. I can bring up for a minute the city's website. Steve, I click the button down.
Oh, you did?
Mm-hmm.
Did it want to turn?
Yep. You going to switch it, or do I need to? While he's bringing that up, there were a couple of things last year that we've worked on and have a little bit more work to do. One of the things that you wanted us to spend some time with last year was our notification module, or Nixle, if you will. And if I can go back here, you can see that on the city's website, clearly, Nixle is up in that upper-left-hand corner. We do not have the kind of enrollment on Nixle yet that we'd like to have, but that was a directive from the Mayor and Council to the City Manager, and he in turn to me, to try and get that product up and running so that we'd have a reverse notification process, if you would, for people to be able to log on and sign up for that free service. And that's actually the Nixle website that shows people how to do that and how they can take advantage of that service. And hopefully, we'll continue to see that service grow as we move forward. There's a couple of other things here that I'd like to share with you. One is, we don't have this quite online yet. It's one of our targets for the coming year. It's a program called "A Child is Missing," and it's a free national broadcast service, similar to Amber Alert, but it's particularly designed to engage the community in helping police to locate missing children and elderly residents quickly using quadrant-based kind of searches with telephone systems. We've always used Neighborhood Watch and those kinds of community programs to help with crime prevention. Last year, we added an element to that called "Leads Online Report It," and I don't have that on the website where you can see it just yet, but basically, that gives people who are dealing perhaps with burglary issues a way to go in and log property so that if they have property stolen, we'll have a way to identify those things. One other quick thing, as far as engaging the community, that I want to share with you. On the city's website, if you look at the navigation bars on the left side, we have a check box right there where I have that highlighted, and it gives you a way to look at crime areas. You know, we talk about Neighborhood Watch and people working with the police and local government on how they can better protect their communities. Crimemapping.com is a program that we brought up just a while ago. I'm going to click on Tennessee. That brings up Murfreesboro, and I'll give that a minute to load. What that's going to do is, and what our citizens can now do, is it'll give you a graphic of the city. You can put in any address that you want. I'll put in 111 West Vine, if I can type here. And we'll do a search, and it'll circle in, and that particular graphic is showing a one-mile radius of this location and the crimes that have been reported to the police for that radius. Now, you look at that and you say, "Well, why is that important?" If I'm in a neighborhood where I suspect I may have a burglary problem or a larceny problem or whatever else, it gives me an interactive ability to go to that website, look at what the location of those incidents are, and hopefully, get the people in that community then to interact with the police and perhaps figure out a way for us to do a better job of protecting them and them helping us do that. That's a tool we didn't have until about six months ago.
How long is that? What's the time period? Is it -- the statistics are a year, or...
It refreshes, Mayor, about every 90 days.
90 days.
And I'll back up a little bit if I can. There's also a thing up here. You see it says "Receive Crime Alerts," where you can actually log in an address there, and if there are crime reports in your neighborhood proxemic to what your home address is, you'll get an email that says, "Hey, pay attention, something's going on." So, community engagement, another way to try to provide some information back. We're working to continue that as we move along. I'll move that down. As far as department goals for the year, quickly, I just want to hit a couple of these things. Gangs, gang activity, violent crime is square in our radar. That's a quality-of-life issue for you, for me, for everybody that lives in or visits Murfreesboro. We will not tolerate it. We'll prosecute people to the fullest extent of the law, federally or otherwise. The gang unit people are working with alcohol, tobacco, and firearms in the United States Attorney's Office, and we will target those people who want to create violence and physical injury to our citizens. So that work will continue. You have a list of some of those other things that are there. Field-based reporting for police incident and arrest reports is coming soon. We've already automated crash reporting. Mr. Gilli, we've talked about some of that a little bit. Automated crash reporting is online, doing well. I am happy to tell you that a working group has now worked to the end, at least of the first round, of promulgation and edits of general orders that we are working towards, state accreditation of our Police Department. Ms. McGannon is gnashing teeth as we speak because I'm forwarding volumes of work that she and staff will need to review before we can move forward, but she's on board with that, and certainly, our City Manager is. We're continuing to do some work on the next generation of two-way radios for police and fire fire. And the last thing that I'll mention to you is, I know you saw a letter a couple of weeks ago where the legal staff and the police department staff is working diligently on some work involving our wrecker towing ordinance, and that work is continuing as we speak. So with that, and I thank you for your patience, but you invest a lot of money in our department, and I wanted to tell you a little bit about some of the things that we're doing. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Chief Christman.
I have one.
Ms. Ailes Harris.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief Christman, you all have done a whole lot of work. Do we do most of our training here?
We do a lot of it here. In fact, last year, Ms. Harris, about 20,000 hours here. This week, we are actually hosting a school from IPTM out of Florida on energy and kinetics for fatal accident crash reconstruction applications and those kinds of things. Our charge to the training staff is bring the highest-quality training you can field to Murfreesboro, Tennessee. I want that to be done in our training rooms and other facilities. We've done a lot of it at Patterson so that we have that training hosted locally as best we can, because that does two things. That makes the best use of our tax dollars for training purposes. It brings other people into the city of Murfreesboro, which is always good for our local economy. And I think frankly, we have a responsibility, being the fifth or sixth-largest department in the state, to take a leadership role in the training of our police officers and the officers that surround Middle Tennessee. We do send a lot of people out for advanced training and career development training. Mr. Lyons is gracious enough to support an extra FBI National Academy appointment position for the fall of this year, and Lieutenant William Sykes will be attending that school. We do as much here as we can, and we take advantage of the travel schools that we need to just for the quality of instruction that we can't get anywhere else.
That's good.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments regarding the police department proposed budget? Back to the automated traffic enforcement, the number in the last year of citations you --
And that number's down some, Mayor, from previous years.
Well, that's 1,000 a month.
Yes, sir. Let me speculate about that. I know in the old system, by the way, kudos to the legal department, Dana Richardson, Chris Griffith, the police staff, Jim Crumley did a ton of work on it, the rebid and the new contract that has gone into place. They're doing the engineering work for the new system upgrades right now. I suspect, Mayor, that those numbers were down a little bit in 2010 for two factors. One, people are paying attention, and they're not running red lights as much. The second thing is, we know we had some technical problems at a couple of the intersections. John Bragg and Rutherford being one of those, that intersection never worked correctly. I don't know if it was the width or the size, the breadth of that intersection, but I suspect when this new system gets installed, we should see some significant improvements in performance there and in some of the others as well. But it continues to work, and I think it'll even, we'll see improvements with the new system install.
So if you have 1,000, and then you're looking at about 170 per signalized intersection, just as an average, and then you have 30 days per month, so six red light running per intersections a day, and you've got four different directions. So frankly, it's not a lot, but the ones that it saves certainly makes a difference. And I hope people understand the reasoning behind it and the fact that it releases officers to do other uniformed service jobs that they don't have to do.
Absolutely.
Watching those six intersections. And also, I've always been stunned, we have 126 at least signalized intersections in the city of Murfreesboro, and we only have those automated enforcement cameras at six of those 126 intersections. So, and those were the ones that we felt like they would be the most useful, but the rest of us look everywhere else we go to, don't we?
You never know.
Yeah.
You never know.
And we don't just pay attention in Murfreesboro, do we? We pay attention when we travel and go somewhere else.
I hope so.
Yes.
I sincerely hope so.
All right. Any other questions or comments regarding the budget for the police department? Twenty-two point eight million dollars. All right. If there are no questions this time, then we'll go on to the drug fund.
Mayor, that appears on page 201 of your budget book. The budget itself is on page 203, and I'll briefly just tell you that it is a balanced budget. The majority of revenue for the drug fund comes from court fines, fines that are routed through the general fund, seizure awards, interest, the sale of fixed assets and seizures, and some limited amount of money from time to time that we get from an unauthorized substance tax. It is a balanced budget. It does not depend upon revenue for the salaries of the people who are assigned to that detail. You may recall or have noticed that in recent weeks, there's been quite a bit of media attention to some units across the state that are driven by revenue that is generated by stops and asset forfeitures and seizures. This mayor and council and our city management staff has never approached vice operations and the funding for vice operations in that way. You all have always provided salaries, benefits, and some operating expenses for that program, and then used fines, seizures, and asset forfeitures to supplement those expenses, and that's the way we continue to do it now. And I'd be glad to try to answer any questions you might have about the drug fund budget.
All right. Any further questions, Chief Christman? Vice Mayor, do you have a question?
If, yeah, I do, and I apologize, Chief, if we could just step back to the normal police department budget for a second.
Yes.
One question was, are we, how many officers do we need to, positions do we need to fill? Are we short, or how do we look on that? Are we need to replace some, or?
Right now, I have, I think we have 10 vacancies right now, and we're processing applications right now. The application process is already taking place, and we're reviewing those applicants, and probably will be looking to interview, I would think, before the end of the fiscal year, and probably be looking at hiring those people right after the start of the next fiscal year. There are about 10, we have two dispatch positions that are vacant, and we're in the process of advertising for those.
Because I know that I had talked to, I think, Mr. Wright last council meeting about some positions. There was a speech paper handed out, and it looked like we were short. It looked like it was like 20 positions, and maybe, Ms. Wright, you recall what that number was?
No, it was 36 positions for certified officers, and we hired 18 of that in the fiscal year '08-'09.
That's correct.
And we never hired the rest of those. So it looked like when you were laying the years beside each other, that we had a decrease in positions, but those positions were never filled. We had some other positions that same year, I think it was about 24 total that went down, but they were also new positions that had never been filled, and that's when the economy obviously dropped, and we felt it was prudent to stop at that point. But we did not decrease filled positions.
So you're looking at that sworn personnel, personnel number on 95 is 239, but 18 of those were not funded because we expected to get some grant money and we didn't? Is that?
No, that was the year we had projected to hire 36 new police officers, and that was the year the economy tanked. We had 18 of those positions that we actually filled, and that September is when we put the brakes on, and not only in this department but others, that we put the brakes on. So those 18 positions that it looks like there were cut, never were filled.
So 221 was the number that actually got, is that right?
At that time, yes.
At that time.
And then we've added a few since, and you added three last year, and we added some from grant funding positions. Mr. Bradford, that answer your question?
Yes, it did. It just, I just want to make sure that, you know, that it appeared by those numbers, those figures, that we were actually running behind, we were short, we weren't filling those positions for whatever reason, and I was --
That was the 18 that were frozen in 2008 and '09, when the economy obviously went bad.
Mr. McFarlane.
Chief, you've updated it. I don't have the yearly report, but you'll give us on occasion a retention report on the officers. How's the, how's our retention in the police department?
Generally, I think it's pretty good. Of the 10 vacancies that we have right now, we have, we have officers that leave and go back into full-time military service. We have some that leave that go into the private sector. We have some that leave for health reasons. We have employees that retire. I anticipate probably three retirements between now and shortly after the start of the fiscal year. But in the majority of cases, the people that leave us, they either leave to get out of law enforcement and public service, or they leave to move up to a different level, some to the federal level, some to military law enforcement, again, some that go back to full-time military. It's just a variety of things. Murfreesboro's a great place to work. I don't remember how many applicants we had. Chief, do you remember how many applicants were in this last cycle by any chance for police officer?
I don't know the number this time, 250 last time I checked, but the last cycle was 387.
387 applicants for police positions the last time. And this time, we have 10 jobs, and I believe you said in excess of 250. We see college graduates, we see master's degrees, we see former police officers, we see, I mean, it's literally the cream of the crop because, you know, could, would everybody always like to make more money? Certainly. But our department, our pay system, our benefits, our training, our equipment is very competitive with virtually anywhere around here. And Mr. McFarlane, to answer your question, we do do the retention studies, and we'd be glad to create that information so that you get it as well.
Chief, I wanted to say that I appreciate the hard work that the men and women of your department are doing, and you, I know you've implemented and you've been working with the roundtable discussions with your men, and I know that's created a lot of good information, and it has helped not only you, but it's helped Mr. Lyons and the city address some issues. And if you want to comment on that, you can. If not, I appreciate those discussions and communication levels with the, with your officers and employees.
Well, I don't know that I'll comment about the roundtable. Mr. Bradford, I appreciate those comments, and Mr. Lyons has been very gracious to do that for the city employees as well. Those are, those are informative sessions. We get better by learning where we can make improvements, and I think we have to, as one of your colleagues said a lot of time, or a long time ago, we have, we have two ears and one mouth. We need to listen twice as much as we talk sometimes. But I will say this, we have wonderful people that work for this city everywhere, in all the departments. I see the work they do, and I'm proud of them, I'm proud of their bosses, and I'm proud of this boss right here, and I'm proud of all of you. I've been a city employee going on 35 years, and so I'll say this as a city employee, and I'll say it on behalf of our police employees. I want to thank all of you, mayor and council, and Mr. Lyons and Jim, because this year, you knew our employees were hurting. You knew that they needed to see an increase in salary, if there was any way to do that. And so you placed a priority on salary increases for our employees. You set that standard. The city manager set that standard, and our department has all set that standard. There are all things that we'd like to have, cars and trucks and mowers and guns and fire hoses and all those kinds of things. I'm sure we will always have those needs. We're not missing any critical needs. Mr. Lyons is very clear. If you have missing critical needs, ask for them, we'll find a way to fund them. But that raises for employees came first, because that's what the mayor and council wanted to see done. I just want to say thank you for that, on behalf of all of our employees, my employees and all the city employees, because like all of America, they've all struggled through these economic difficulties in the recent years, but they continue working hard every day for you, for our citizens, for all of the people that visit Murfreesboro. And what you've done this year by adding these salary increases will help them provide for their families, and it'll reward them for their dedication to public service. So thank you for that. We appreciate it very much.
Amen.
The roundtable, do they enjoy that, employees? And you all get a lot of?
It's mixed. Ms. Harris, people come and offer good suggestions, and they're creative suggestions. If they don't come, I think it's a combination of things. Some people don't come because they don't think anything's going to come of the suggestions they make, and we try our best to do some things different, to be responsive to those kinds of concerns so that you will have people involved. Some people don't come because typically, we schedule them in non-working hours. You can't come to the roundtable when you're on duty. They're getting paid to work, so they have to come during non-duty hours. And some people, just frankly, after they've worked all day or been in court half a day, you know, they don't want to come back to the roundtable. They want to go home, go to bed, or they want to go home and be with their kids or their family, do whatever. But I think for the people that do come, the suggestions that they've made have made meaningful improvements in the police department. The roundtable really was an outgrowth of a suggestion that was made prior to that process. Teleserve, you know, I can go on and on. Crime Suppression Unit was a roundtable suggestion, and they have great ideas. We just have to listen to them and do the best we can to put those pieces in play. So, do they like it? I think they do. I think some are skeptical and some just, that's just another thing they got to make time for, and so sometimes they don't.
Seems like it helps the department to grow when you hear and make suggestions.
Oh, absolutely. One of the things we're looking at right now is some, some uniform suggestions that they've asked us to take a look at, and we're studying that.
Other comments? If not, thank you, Chief Christman. We'll let you go. We're proud of your department every day.
Thanks for your patience and your support.
Thank you. This time, we'll do the Fire Department. Chief Gaines, welcome.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council.
We're expecting an extensive briefing from you, the department of the Fire Department. You are a man of many words.
He didn't -- Well, it won't be his policy, Chief Christmas.
Well, your fuel allocation's one-fourth of what is, is, so I expect you to only speak one-fourth of the time that he does.
I'm the mayor and council. It is my pleasure to present to you tentative budget requests for the most of our department for the fiscal year 2011-2012. The 2011-12 tentative budget is projected at $14,488.55 and represents an increase of approximately $502,669, or 3.59% over the 2010-11 budget. And 99% of the increase is associated with personnel costs. The department responded to 9,718 calls for service during the fiscal year of 2010, and is projected to respond to 10,800 calls by the end of this fiscal year. After review of the pace of development, Fire Department management staff made a recommendation not to open Station 10. There have only been 28 billing permits issued since July 1, 2010, of which all were single-dwelling permits. There hadn't been any multi-dwelling residential permits issued in that district. And right now, at this time, Station 9 can still meet the average response time to fire calls in Station 10's district. In addressing council's priorities and initiatives, our priority is to maintain a Class II rating In addressing council's priorities and initiatives, our priority is to maintain a Class Two rating, which places the department in the top one percent in the nation, and to provide fire safety education programs in the schools. We'll also strive to keep a strong fire rating, which assists in the recruitment of industry and other businesses. Our customer service focus, we will continue to provide excellent training programs for fire personnel, participate in the first phase of the customer service training for all city personnel. We propose to broadcast PSAs, Public Safety Announcements, on the city TV channel to educate our citizens on home fire hazards such as safe use of oxygen, raw heaters, candles, et cetera. And we intend to post these PSAs on Facebooks, and to get some interaction with the citizens of Murfreesboro, and to answer their questions arising from the PSAs, and to offer also any safety tips. So we'll, we'll try our best to interact with them through the new medium of Facebook that we've just launched. Our 2011 accomplishments, we replaced all AED's automatic external defibrillators citywide and added an additional four. We purchased hazard material monitoring equipment, including the weather station, which was eighty percent funded by the fire fellow grant. And we purchased pre-planning software, iWalki software, which, the iWalki software, we're at the ending stages of initiating it into service. It's, it's been a long process and had a few setbacks, but we're just about ready to launch the iWalki. We purchased two new seventy-five-foot aero fire trucks and a lead command vehicle, and the estimated property value saved by our department was seven point six million dollars. Our departmental goals, if council so approves, we are asking to modify the department's name to the Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Department, which would be more indicative of the actual service that we perform currently. And it also transcends us into the transition of the industry as far as the fire service. That's what most departments are doing. It's focused more on the rescue than fires. We have more rescue situations than we have fires, which is a complement to, to educating the citizens of Murfreesboro. We also would like to begin a study for a training facility to help maintain our ISO two rating, and to facilitate training of our personnel. We will install a generated headquarters in Fire Station Nine, which we've already received the grant, which is an eighty percent matching federal grant, with a performance period ending of December of this year. And the update to transponder boxes, that project has been completed. And we're hoping to revamp and conduct Project Safe. That project was initiated back in two thousand, and we want to revamp it and kind of launch it again in a different manner. And I would like council to take a look at our benchmarking measures, and look back a couple of years, and you'll see that the men and women of Murfreesboro Fire Department consistently match or better the benchmarking measures for all the criteria. And I think that they should be commended. I would be happy to answer any question, should there so be any.
Questions for Chief Gaines.
I have a question. I have a question, ma'am.
Yes.
Chief Gaines, in your goals for 2012...
Yes.
One of them, let's see, is to do a study for a training facility.
Correct.
We do no training here for firefighters. We send all of them out?
We do not have, currently have a training facility. We do our training through the Fire and Coles Academy and some off-site locations once we can procure those.
That's fire training. We had a facility in the state...
Yeah, that's what I was thinking about.
Took it back. So it was in the city, and because of the smoke and the hazard, and the, plus the state wanted their property back, so we, we lost it, and then they built the fire facility in Deacon, so you can set fires down there and train. I think that's the facility that you're looking at. We're looking for a property somewhere that we can do that without incidental damage and conflict with residential and other commercial areas.
Yeah, that shows how far in behind. I, I remember seeing smoke at this building all the time.
At one, at one time, it was pretty far out in the county. It's not anymore.
Nope.
All right. Good job. Doing a good job.
It was.
It was burned up.
Mr. Young and I went through the Fire Academy and put on our suppression suits, and I guess others have done that also, but that's, that's really an interesting thing to do. Plus, if we have a demolition, sometimes we've been able to use that demolition as a training site, just for that one particular day or incident. All right, other questions or comments for Chief Gaines?
I was noticing, and I guess it's the same question that I asked Chief Christman. I noticed that the employees looked like they had went down, and I would, and I talked, like, again, talked to Mr. Wright about it, and I think it was due to the fact that, that we had applied for a grant at one time, and didn't receive that grant.
Correct.
And also with the not opening of the station out on the west side of town, that was why those positions were not filled.
That's right.
Are we, are we okay on positions, or do you feel like we've got sufficient personnel? We don't need any...
We're, we're only three down from when the economy tanked and position were frozen. And anytime that I've needed to fill positions, and when the dynamics of the department has changed, Mr. Lyons has been exceptional as far as allowing us to fill those positions. So currently, we, you know, it's not, it's not a rush to fill those three positions.
What about the incidents of arson? Is that down also with fire?
I don't have the actual figures on that, but just from Joe and Nada's in contact with the Fire Marshal, they are down.
Other questions, comments? If not, we're sorry we kept you so long, but you've given an excellent report, and once again, we're very proud every day of each member of your department and what they do.
Yes, sir. I'd like to echo the sentiments of Chief Christman, and on behalf of the men and women of Murfreesboro Fire Department, to say that we are appreciative of the effort that the council has taken to institute this pay increase. So thank you very much.
You tell the members of the Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Department that we're tremendously pleased that our taxpayers have allowed us to do that.
Let me bring it.
Yes, Mr. Washington.
And I'm also interested in that study for, for a training facility. That'd be pretty interesting. It wouldn't be similar to the one at Bethencourt, but whatever the training needs they, we could utilize here. And for all of you public safety folks out there that you do a wonderful job, but being an electric person, I know it's a generator part, the way we've had weather around here is so unpredictable. And in your public safety and essential services places, you really need to look into doing that. Amy Lee's pretty dependable, but they can't do anything about that.
Fortunately, we had a number of generators we were able to move around during the storm two years ago, tornado, and keep our water and sewer part working.
They need to have them.
Mr. Lyons, we had had a request, I know, at one time about, you know, our, our fire halls. We've done a great job blending those in with the residential communities that they're in. We've almost done, besides the front, the big front doors on the front, we've almost done two that have a job, because people can't tell that it's a fire hall. Can we look at some point about putting some, I know we have our yellow signs on the front that show that it's a safe house, but is there a way that we could look at some point, maybe looking to put some sign, like a ground sign in front of the signs that show, the fire halls that show Murfreesboro Fire Hall, Station Ten, or something, so that if people are looking for emergencies, they do know? I, I think of the one that's on Pitt's Lane, and that if you don't drive past it, you wouldn't know that it's a fire hall. So maybe something that lets people know it is a, it is a fire hall.
We could take a look at that?
Yeah.
Heard that one before.
All right. Building and Codes Department, next. Step up, Mr. Whitaker. And don't let us violate a sign ordinance if we put up a sign in front of a fire hall, if you don't mind. Are they in residential zones?
I do believe most are located in residential zones.
All right. It's going to be tough.
I could answer that, but I choose not to.
I understand.
I'll go after his budget is approved.
That's right.
If I may defer that maybe to the planning commission. I'd like to cover the Building Codes Department budget this time. I'll try to be brief. I'd actually like to start with our staffing needs. In your proposed budget before you, we have proposed to actually reduce one vacant position at a cost savings of approximately fifty-six thousand dollars. That would be compared to last year's budget. Also, you will be receiving from Mr. Lyons, if you hadn't already have, don't already have it, a budget amendment. That budget amendment is in the amount of three thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars. To go over briefly what that is, I'm proposing to take a, a part-time electrical inspector, make that a full-time position, and also take a vacant inspector's position and reduce that down to a training position, entry-level position. It's almost a wash is the reason that is a three thousand, seven hundred dollar number. So basically, we're just kind of increasing one, decreasing the other. The need for that electrical inspector is, three years ago, when we took the electrical inspections over, the state used to do that, we have made it this long without, with a full-time and a part-time position. We're getting to the point now to where we actually need some help in that, in that area. The electrical permits and licensing create approximately two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars of revenue for our department every year, so they more than offset that increase. And when we have events, and unfortunately, it appears that we keep having events, talking like the last storm event, we have to apply our resources to try to get people's power back on, and that puts us behind covering the new construction. We're hoping that the added time that that inspector gets to spend will help us catch up quicker in, in, in those events. Like to talk briefly about our permitting. Unfortunately, we experienced a reduction again in our construction permits overall. For the first six months of this fiscal current budget year, we were down by about fourteen percent. The overall revenue projections, we're going to come up with a shortfall of approximately twenty-two percent for this year. Your budget in front of you actually quotes a twenty-eight percent. I recalculated that actually yesterday. We've issued a couple of permits, so that's actually a little better. It's twenty-two percent. And also, in our department, as the overall number of permits may have dropped, our workload has not dropped, it has actually increased due to the fact that we've experienced about a fourteen percent or fifteen percent increase in our property maintenance inspections. We will probably conduct somewhere in the neighborhood of eleven thousand inspections by the time of year-end. Those don't seem to be dwindling anytime fast. There's a lot of inventory out in the city of vacant lots, vacant houses. We are, we are working diligently to try to take care of those. I know that there's, we get a lot of complaints on vacant property and overgrown lots. Again, when they're in foreclosure, when they're in bankruptcy, it takes us a while to track that down. The legal department has been instrumental in helping us track that down. We're constantly in Susan's office trying to locate people to send notices to, and then it takes, it is time-consuming and cumbersome to try to get them to do something with that property, so, but we are diligently working at that. I'd also like to, on an up note, I'd like to say that in April, we issued thirty-nine single-family detached permits and eight single-family attached permits, for a total of forty-seven. We do hope this trend continues. It is the first increase we've had in our permit issuance in residential in quite some time. To go over our department goals, we will be conducting, or start to conduct this year, accessibility surveys of all of our city buildings. And working with the legal department again, I think I'm going to move my office down there. Working with the legal department again, Ms. McGannon, we had met and talked and felt it was time, and I do agree, for us to do an accessibility survey. We conducted one eighteen years ago, and at that time, found that we had some deficiencies. We made those corrections. We're in compliance, but in the last eighteen years, the other departments have added quite an inventory to our building list, and it's time, we feel, to go by and, and take an inventory and see. The results of that inventory naturally will be brought back to, or that survey will be brought back to the council with recommendations, if we need to make changes and what have you. Also, we will continue to review our sign ordinance this year. Last year, we made three major changes in our sign ordinance, all of which included increases in the number of signs, or the size of signs, or the height of signs. I'd like to say that we will continue working with the planning department, and again, the legal department, and bringing recommendations on our sign ordinance back to the planning commission and council. As well as we will start, actually, next week, the contractor will start renovating this building. That is an eight-month project, and our department is responsible for overseeing that. We will, we promise to try to keep the air on in the council chambers. I told them it's number one priority, as well as the city manager's office. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
You left your office out. You don't want to switch your attorney, I guess.
Well, can I, can I take that under advisement? Actually, I promised Ms. McGannon she would have her own thermostat, and it would actually work when we get finished.
Really? That's quite exceptional. All right. Any questions for Mr. Whitaker?
Take your time on the signs.
Dooley knows.
Okay, the vote's one to one on signs right now. Okay. Anything else for Building and Codes Department? Mr. Whitaker, thank you for all you do. Please pass along to your department heads how nice it is to have you on staff and working with us every day, and with our customers, our people.
I will. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Planning and Engineering Department is next. And Mr. Adelite is going to take care of that. Oh, it's Mr. Griffiths. This chief engineer is headed to the runway.
It's a tag-team approach. It's a tag, yes.
It is. All right. Any comments regarding your budgets this year, please?
Yes, sir. We're going to be doing this together. I'm going to cover the planning section. The planning section has seven employees, and we provide staffing for the planning commission, the border zone appeals, the historic zone commission, and we make frequent appearances before the city council with the items that the planning commission and other boards recommend to you. We have quite a number of things that we're involved in, floodplain management, the zone ordinance enforcement, the master planning, and we provide assistance to other departments. In the vein of the safe and livable neighborhoods, one of our, I guess our biggest tools is our zone ordinance, and we're constantly working with it, making amendments, but also dealing with it on, almost on an hourly basis, where we field calls about what's going on. And it is, in fact, a tool that makes our community a safe and livable community. In the vein of excellent service with, excellent service with folks on customer service, we entertained over three thousand, nine hundred visitors to our department so far this fiscal year. People coming in with appointments, coming in for permits, that we entertain in our front counter or in meetings. We keep a visitor's log, so we know people coming in. We also fielded over sixty-three hundred phone calls, and that's quite a number of calls for the staff that we have. Couple of things that we're doing in, in engaging our community. Of course, we are responsible for sending notification for our public hearings, and that is a, quite a, a job because of the number that we have. But also, we have attended neighborhood meetings. So far this year, we've had thirteen neighborhood meetings where we have facilitated meetings between developers and zoning applicants or renovation matters, so that we could help them to understand what the process was, and they'd be better prepared to come and participate in our public hearing processes. During the year, we've reviewed over a hundred and thirty site plans. We've viewed eighty-one final plots and twenty-eight rezoned applications, and we expect that that's actually going to uptick a little bit before the fiscal year's over, because we are seeing just a little bit increase in activity from what we projected. from what we projected down. A couple of things that we're gonna be undertaking this next fiscal year, one of them is a zoning study for the Manny Avenue area, and in fact, sometime either in late July, early, excuse me, late June or early July, we'll be having a neighborhood meeting at the Patterson Park Community Center on that, and we'll be getting some really good public input from the neighborhood up there. A second thing that's gonna be a big priority for us is to welcome the new residents into the city that were in the litigation area, number one, that has been settled. We've got a number of residents that will become in, become in city residence effective October 5th. We wanna make sure that they're welcomed and know what to expect. And one last thing that I wanna talk about in terms of accomplishments, it's gonna be one of my desires to bring GIS to our front counter. We're gonna try to put in a big screen, big screen computer monitor, so that when people come to our office, we don't have to move them to a back room to be able to see what's on the computer. That GIS is such a wonderful tool, but only when it's accessible. So we wanna make it accessible at our front counter to help people do, as they're getting their building permits and seeking information. Mr. Griffith has a presentation on the engineering, and then we'll be glad to answer questions for the whole department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for the opportunity to present our budget for the upcoming year. First, I'd like to say I'm very proud of the accomplishments of our engineering staff in the previous year. Some of them which, some of the accomplishments include providing review of all development plans within the city. We completed the installation of a gas extraction system to reclaim an old landfill and add it to our gateway trail system. We oversaw the repair of the public infrastructure after the, after the May floods, and we completed several construction projects, including the Leaf Avenue drainage improvements, the Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Center, Phase III of the Stone River Greenway extension, and a new section of Veterans Parkway that's currently open, that extends between State Route 99 to 96, to State Route 96. In the upcoming fiscal year, we'll continue to manage our drainage program by visiting each drainage request to assess the need for future action. An important addition that we're making with our, reviewing our drainage requests, a member of our MIS group is developing a web-based software that helps us to be able to track the drainage information, the drainage requests that we, that we get on a regular basis. We estimate that we'll receive about 250 calls regarding drainage concerns in neighborhoods. And we're also adding that, we'll continue to add that to our GIS system, to see if there's areas that we need a major overhaul of our drainage system. Two of those areas that the council has approved studies which are ongoing is the Mitchell-Nelson area, that we're currently completing a drainage study there, and also in the Haynes Drive, Memorial Drive, Memorial Boulevard area, we have an ongoing drainage study. Moving forward, also with, with construction next year, we anticipate the beginning of the Joby Jackson extension from Church Street to I-24, the Mill Tennessee Boulevard widening from Main to Greenland, the Wilkinson Pike widening from Thompson Lane to Medical Center Parkway, and Phase IV of the Stone River Greenway extension, which will extend the Greenway all the way to the Barfield Crescent Park area. One, one item that I'll mention that's a significant increase in our upcoming budget is an application that we're making to FEMA. It was actually made, you gave, you authorized the application about a month ago in the meeting. As I mentioned, it'll be a joint project with FEMA to purchase several residents at the Bridge Avenue, Main Street area that has been subjected to repetitive flooding over the last several years. Of that increase, only 12.5%, or 85,000, would be funded locally, and that would be funded through the stormwater user fee. With that, as Mr. Adelot mentioned, we'll be happy to answer any, any questions you may have.
Thank you. Mr. Griffith, any questions regarding the planning or the engineering department's budget as they are presented?
Mr. Lyons, between 2010 and '11, where we see the personnel and the operating costs that went significantly down, significantly down, wasn't that where we pulled transportation out of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Other questions?
Mr. Lyons or Mr. Griffith, the stormwater pool of money is, I know there's an ongoing need for drainage improvements in the city. Is that somewhere that we could possibly help the engineering department with some funding for that?
We already are making a transfer from the Stormwater Fund back to the General Fund for the support that's provided by the engineering department, so we are already making that transfer. In terms of the day-to-day operational costs, and then earlier in the meeting, we talked about some of the capital projects that have also been funded from that.
I might add, we mentioned two studies, and we'll, we're looking at several areas of town that, that were constructed back in the 50s, and if someone asks you what the, I guess, the expected life of a storm drainage system, it appears to be about 50 to 60 years old, because we're, the Mitchell-Nelson area, the Leaf Avenue drainage area, that was constructed back in the 50s, and we'll continue to, to look at our downtown system and look at ways that we can improve it. The Manny Avenue work that's going on is an older area of town that, that is much in need of improvements, and I appreciate the council's support in all those projects. We had already done some work, too, on Sunset, down to Monty Hale, Battleground Drive, that was an 80 or 90,000-dollar project. Doesn't seem like it's a very big project when you look at Leaf Avenue, but it certainly drained a large area of town that had become encumbered. So we've spent, we do that little by little, and I believe the street department did a lot of that, did they not, in-house, or did they do it under contract?
We did, we did some of it in-house, and we did a good portion of it through our annual stormwater contract also. We, right now, we budget about $250,000 a year for, for larger maintenance-type projects, and then we also make use, as you mentioned, the street department does their yeoman's effort as far as improvements, that's just through the general, through the general fund, and then also the stormwater user fee. Mr. Kirchner is always looking for possible capital improvement projects to be able to assist us with.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
One comment, I would like to compliment you and your staff, because I've had several calls and situations about drainage, and your staff has cooperated fully. We've went and walked ditches and looked at backyards, and it seems to me you've gone out of your way to be very helpful in those situations, because those are very important to those people that have water and situations.
I, thank you, Councilman Young. I just had a email back and forth with a constituent this morning, and just noting just that, that certainly a person's residence is very important to them, and we want to make sure that we address their needs, and we do have a hierarchy. Obviously, health and safety is our number-one goal. If streets are flooding, or if someone, where folks are having accidents, or certainly with, with water getting into homes, we wanna make sure that everyone knows that their, that their individual problems are important to us.
Also, our street department helps an awful lot with that, with our ditches and the easements, stormwater. Excellent job. Other questions for Planning and Engineering? If not, thank you very much for your service. Thanks to all your employees, those people who work with us every day, take good care of us. Thank you both. This time, we'll have the Transportation Department. That's on 121 to 127. Mr. Richardson, welcome.
Thank you, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here to discuss this year's upcoming budget. As you know, the Transportation Department's divided into two sections, one being the traffic section that takes care of the traditional surface transportation, then the public transportation section as well. Looking back through some of our accomplishments, and it's interesting, I think, to look back and start writing them down to figure out, you know, the things that you did accomplish in the previous year and the remainder of this fiscal year. But we've continued to increase the Rover ridership from 2010 and '11. For instance, we got nearly a 7% increase, we're up to about 190, 192,000 trips a year now, so that's been growing steadily since the inception of the Rover program. And we're correspondingly increasing the revenues as well, from about 86,510 versus about 96,000 in 2011. We've also completed a rider survey, which was an interesting thing, to see what, identify who are our riders and who are our customers. And one of the things that was noted in that is that most of the riders that use the service use that to go to work and use it for medical trips. We were also noting that the largest percent or divisions of our riders were the category of income of $20,000 a year and under. And putting that together, I think that what we're serving right now is a transit-dependent clientele, that we provide some opportunities to get where they need to, to, you know, increase the quality of their life by having and maintaining jobs, as well as get to medical appointments, shopping, and other things. And the other part of the survey was looking at, what is it that you want out of the service and what you like and not like? One of the major things that, and I know you've heard this, and it came out of surveys, is that people did want expanded service in several forms, being expanded hours per day. We currently run from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And the other one was the weekend service, Saturday and/or Sunday. And of course, the other one was expanded area. Right now, being an infant system, just running eight routes, we don't even go west to I-24. So this is something that we're listening to, and I would say that, in accordance with the conversation with the city council and administration, that we are waiting until that we see some, you know, fairly substantial increase in our economic conditions to be able to expand the service and be able to provide some of those additional needs of our citizens. I think they are good, good needs and good wants, and that's something that we will be looking at over the next year as far as some of the front-end planning, to be able to provide that when the economic circumstances warrant that. Some of the other things that we've done this year, we did hire a Transit Operations Manager, which oversees the day-to-day operation scheduling and so forth. We have bid and installed the Transit Shelter Hub, I don't know if you've seen this yet, but the corner Walnut and Burton, that's in place now. That was one of the biggest things our passengers wanted, and you can understand why, if you're waiting on the bus out in the rain, that's not a pleasant experience. That is an attractive facility, and if you hadn't seen that, I'd invite you to go by. And the other thing that we've done this year is, we've near-finished completion of our Transit Facility Needs Assessment Study. We are looking forward, and next year's goal is to move one step closer to trying to build a dedicated transit facility. Right now, if you're aware, we're working out the back of Joey Smith's garage. It's served us to this point, but we need something that's more conducive to customer service and being where the customers are. In the traffic portions of operation, we've completed the R.R.-funded Thompson Lane Resurfacing Project last year. We're very near completion of the R.R.-funded CCT and Traffic Signal Interconnect Project, that was a little over a million dollars, and we have, hope to have something next month that'll be able to show the council as an impressive system. We've completed the Phase II Coordinated Signal Timing Study and completed the funded property for Chamber of Commerce, that project was federally funded, I think about 44% of that was. And worked with the engineering department, doing several roadway projects. You've probably noticed that there's some overlap of what Mr. Griffith was talking about and the things that I'm talking about as far as some of the roadway projects, the ones that have been built at Manny Avenue and Veterans Parkway, and especially the federally and state-funded projects that are upcoming, such as Mill Tennessee Boulevard and Joby Jackson Parkway. Mr. Griffith makes sure they physically get constructed properly, and on a lot of those, I handle the contracting and the funding, and make sure that the Attorney General and Department of Justice don't come see us. So, we do have several goals for next year, and that would be to install some of the own-street shelters in various locations around town, some small ones that would accommodate two, three people standing down the street, the purchase of some GPS systems for our buses, and to begin the environmental phase of our transit facility. One of the big initiatives this year, and it's been a while since we've done this, would be to update the major thoroughfare plan. I think that everyone's been involved in that before knows that that's a laborious undertaking, and we look forward to getting that going. The funding for that will not be available till October 1, but after that, I think we'll see some things moving forward. And we're also looking at funding the last phase of the Stone River Greenway extension, which is Phase IV. And just in general, relative to our budget, you'll probably notice in the actual budget sheets, an overall reduction of about 923,000 from the previous year. And a lot of that has to do with the completion of some of the R.R.-funded projects that have been shifted out. And two of our biggest expenses for this year, certainly, like every other department, would be the fuel, and we've seen a budget increase from 2011 to 2012 of about a $50,000 difference. And of course, our maintenance has increased greatly from 2011, from 114,000 to 196 for this year, mainly due to the age of our fleet. We are coming up on what's called the, the minimum useful life of our vehicles, five years or 150,000 miles, and we are experiencing a whole lot of maintenance on the vehicles. You can imagine, right around town, those are pretty tough miles, urban settings, starting and stopping, continuously picking up letting passengers off. So we will be, next year, probably looking at the replacement of these buses. The good part about that, I think, is with the differential in our maintenance budget, that will about cover what the match would be from the city of Burficeboro to actually buy the new buses. So that will be somewhat cost-neutral to us in the future. For instance, this year, we had to replace two engines in our buses, and that's quite expensive as well. Employee-wise, we are adding two part-time driver positions, and we're trying to keep our, keep the hours down for some of our existing part-time drivers, and also trying to minimize the overtime that we're experiencing for some of our drivers who are out. This is a, pretty much a cost-neutral thing as well. We're using the same, the same hourly rate and just having more part-time people to fill that. We do have, we do have an issue with the wire from 6:00 to 6:00 operation in 30 minutes on either end. We have to cover a 13-hour day, so it's a good marriage, I think, to have the combination of the part-time and the full-time employees. And be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Richardson regarding the Transportation Department's budget as it's been presented? Well, one thing, I think the department's done an excellent job in maintaining the Rover fleet availability, in moving the routes to where people are, and you didn't mention that, but I think during the four years, or four-plus years that you've been running those, those routes have been accessible to different people over different times, and I think you've got a good route structure. My compliments to your department on that.
Thank you.
And I know you deal with dollars and cents all the time, so I appreciate all the excellent work you do with our Metropolitan Planning Organization, with our Southeast Corridor Study, with the Relax and Ride, the RTA, and federal government, and everybody else that you've gotta deal with, while at the same time, you're, people deal with the local traffic issues and the things that they do, so my congratulations to you.
And I appreciate that, and I would like, you know, thank the staff, Ms. Patzner Knight, Mr. Paul Chandra, certainly give me a lot of help on the traffic end, and certainly could not cover that much ground without their help.
Any questions, comments?
Mayor, I wanted just to thank
Mayor, I wanted just to thank Dana, you know, out of really any department head that we have, Dana will get the phone calls on the potholes and the streetlights not working, and he and Ram will really go above and beyond to check different alternatives that we have. So I had someone ask me today about curb cuts on Northfield Boulevard, and so, you know, those are all those, those issues that, like being on WGNS, that we have someone calling about potholes and things. So they do a fantastic job on making sure that all those are addressed, so we appreciate that.
When it comes to potholes, then my easiest solution to that is I pick up the phone call Mr. Templeton, and he gets right on that one.
And I can say there aren't many potholes. There are a few, but not many.
So I'm glad to be here. Thank you.
The other thing is, I think most of the people here in our town certainly ride the roads, and they find out that traffic is going to get more and more, and the cost of gasoline is going to get more and more, and we're going to have to find that public transportation is something we're really going to have to maintain and consider over the years, and not just our local intra-city area, but that goes between here in Smyrna and Laverne and on into Nashville, to the airport, to the medical community, to the governmental buildings, to the downtown business areas, and to those outline areas. And I think all our people need to realize that over the next 20 years, the transportation system's going to have to change here if we're going to maintain this region to be accessible and economically viable, because people are going to find it more and more difficult. We know in California, it's very difficult to get anywhere by vehicles, individual vehicles, single people riding in single vehicles. And we're going to have to figure out a way to find a method to get us all to ride public transportation more in the years to come. It's just, it's just something that's very important, and something's just going to have to happen. Thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you.
Again, more money. Street Department, we're going to ask Mr. Templeton to come up and take the thanks of all of us, because all the other departments look for Mr. Templeton to take care of everything.
Now we know the truth.
Now we know where it's all coming from.
It's on the record.
Mr. Templeton, we're very happy to see you at least come and see us again.
Members of the City Council, I realize the hour is getting late, and I promise I will be brief, okay?
Take all the time you need.
I want to thank you for this opportunity to explain the accomplishments of the Street Department, our plans for the future, and the 2011-2012 budget. I would like to begin by touching on our council priorities. Under the category Safe and Livable Neighborhoods, our main objective of this area is to provide the citizens of Murphysboro with the most efficient and economical maintenance programs for our streets, signs, and storm drainage systems. In regard to strong and sustainable financial economic growth, our policy is to routinely evaluate the condition of our roads, signs, and storm drainage systems in an effort to assure that we are providing the necessary maintenance when required. We are always striving to control operational costs, and one of our methods is the use of Rutherford County Correctional Inmates to minimize our labor costs. In regard to excellent services with focus on our customer service, proper response to citizens' concerns is one of our highest priorities. We strive to evaluate the situation and provide the citizen with an answer within less than 24 hours. We also believe in providing advanced notification of projects and events that will impact the community or the general public. In regard to engaging our community through the use of the city's Facebook page, we intend on providing additional information on departmental events and project scheduling. Our fiscal year 2011 accomplishments include the resurfacing of 53 linear miles of streets. We maintained 569 linear miles of city streets and state routes. We collected 6,390 cubic yards of leaves and yard waste to be converted into mulch. We demolished two single-family homes on the behalf of the Community Development Program. We installed or replaced 1,028 regulatory street marking signs. We coordinated 277 permits for working in the right-of-way. We responded to four major winter storms, clearing approximately 604 lane miles of roadway and applying in excess of 1,000 tons of roadway salt. Our fiscal year 2012 departmental goals include the completion of the sign inventory review. We identified all critical non-compliant signs and replaced approximately 60% of these. We will continue this process in the coming year in an effort to meet the 2015 Federal Highway Administration's mandate for reflectivity. We researched available herbicides, and will implement an experimental spraying program this summer in an effort to reduce the spraying cycles. We continue the collection of information necessary for the implementation of a long-term sidewalk, curb, and gutter maintenance program. We strive to continue to respond to citizens' concerns within a reasonable amount of time and also stress the need to adequately explain our intentions in resolving the concern. We intend on implementing a 20-year street paving program to ensure that all city streets are repaved within this timeframe if funding is available. We intend on researching the cost of using brine for better mitigation of winter storms, research the use of recycled asphalt applications, in an effort to decrease our paving cost and increase our annual repaving schedule, develop a drainage structure and ditch maintenance schedule to assure that our drainage ways are being maintained on a routine basis in an effort to minimize the effects of flooding. In conclusion, I would like to commend my staff for their efforts and the accomplishments of these goals and their dedication of service to this department. I also want to express my appreciation to you, Mayor, and members of this council for your support through the years. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Templeton, and we certainly want to recognize his efforts. Explain the difference between linear miles and lane miles.
Well, linear mile, Mayor, could be anywhere from two to six lane miles, because a lane mile is just one 12-foot wide line, you know.
So a lane mile, if you've got five lanes, you've got five lane miles per mile.
Sixty feet wide, you know, per linear mile, whereas, you know, a single lane mile is 12-foot wide by one mile.
All right, any other thoughts or questions or comments regarding the Street Department's budget? And we do appreciate everything you do, whether it's ditch repair, or fixing potholes or grates, or trying to get everything up to level, or take care of the
Salt.
Salt and anything else.
Thank you, Mayor.
Other questions, comments? We do realize what you do, and we do appreciate all of your department and the way they take care of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. This time, we'll look at state street aid. Who will be taking state street? Thank you, Mr. Lyons.
We get aid from the state for our streets.
I thought it was just for state street.
Give it the honey, Ken.
It is a balanced budget, Mayor. We do get reimbursed for work. We do perform on state streets, including traffic signs, storm drainage, sidewalks, curb and gutter.
Any questions? Any questions regarding state street fund or the state street fund? All right, Urban Environmental Department?
And Cynthia is under the weather, so I would have put Robert Perry, her able assistant, on the stand and made him testify, but he promised me many good things if I didn't.
Well, I think they've already started, because they've put the 200 Years for the City out on the corner of Memorial and Broad. That looks great. Thank you. Good work for that and all our city pocket parks.
Urban Environmental is actually down a little over $10,000 from last year. A lot of that is a reduction in their capital that they're purchasing this year. They did cover the increases in cost in gasoline. They've added some dollars for some additional contract mulching in different places. They've covered what they think is going to be the increases in utilities. They have two new initiatives that I think are special that you want to look at under departmental goals on page 136. They are establishing a community landscape awards program, where they'll be recognizing businesses, commercial sites, that do above and beyond extraordinary work with their landscaping efforts, and also a tree appreciation program, where they're going to try to identify significant trees in the community and do a little recognition of those. If you have any questions, Roberts will answer.
Any questions on Urban Environmental Department's budget as it's been presented?
Mayor, I would like to compliment this department. They seem to do more and more with less and less, and they keep the city looking good at all times. And they've got a lot of good, hard-working people that put their heart and soul into it, and they, and they make the city look good, and I'd like to thank them for that.
I think like all of our departments, they're very ingenious in the way they treat our landscape and how they help the city look better by really being very creative, not only in the pocket parks and how they take care of our, those properties, but how they help our citizens, both commercial, retail, and locals, anytime there's a question about what to add, what to use. And I think they do an excellent job aesthetically across the city.
Absolutely.
If there are no questions regarding that, then we'll go to the Civic Plaza budget.
Here again, you've got your Urban Environmental Department employees taking care of the area here around City Hall and up on the square. They've got a $16,000 increase in their budget. Most of that's capital, where they're having to buy a new zero-turn mower for the work here around our building and up along downtown. They've also budgeted some additional money to put in additional hardscapes around the square here around City Hall to just take out some of the higher maintenance areas that they're finding with traditional materials. And again, Roberts will answer any questions if you have.
Any questions regarding our Civic Plaza? Not, we'll go to the parking garage.
No real change. We're down $900. 95% of this budget's electricity to light the parking garage, and we're pretty comfortable with the numbers we've got budgeted there.
Is the City Hall Energy Efficient Grant, have anything, is there anything in that that will help the city garage?
Unfortunately, no. If you remember, as we considered that grant, we ran out of grant funds before we could get to the garage area. So there's, there's not anything currently in that energy grant program for reworking the garage lights.
All right, as you can see, the electric bill is near $100,000, so that's something we possibly ought to look at.
We actually, it turned off half the bulbs down there. Still provided an adequate level of lighting, but you'll see, it was $133,000 a few years ago. It's dropped to $98,000, so we have been able to make some improvement there. Mr. Whitaker's still continuing to look for grants that would take care of that project.
All right, next, our non-departmental.
Mayor, this is a very small category of items that don't really fit anywhere else. The reserve for uncollected taxes is the 2% allowance we put on the current year taxes, assuming they will not be collected all in full the first year. The adjustment allowance on delinquent taxes is where taxpayers appeal their taxes to the assessor, and occasionally they, we have to give back money. It varies from year to year. We've been fortunate lately, it's been fairly small, but we have had it be more than what we had budgeted. The payment to schools, as you know, the mixed drink tax, 50% of that goes to the schools, so that number's tied directly to our revenue number. And unforeseen is currently, we budgeted $500,000, and that will change as we finish out the budget this year.
All right, any questions of Ms. Wright regarding this budget? All right, if that is, no questions on that department, then we'll go to some potential budget amendments that have been received since our first meeting. Mr. Lyons, would you like to go through those?
Try to run through these quickly, Mayor. We aren't requesting any formal action on these amendments this evening, but what we want to do is make sure we reflect back to you what we've heard thus far to make sure we understand the changes you might consider. The first has to do with the senior center. Rutherford County has budgeted $155,000 for the senior center this year. Ms. Burt asked for, and the senior center commission asked for $175,000 for the upcoming year. Unfortunately, that wasn't funded, so we do need to reduce the appropriation from Rutherford County for the senior center back to the $155,000, and we would fund that from the senior center fund balance. Secondly, Ms. Burt had included a purchase of a van, and she was seeking a grant for that. She's gotten some feedback from the granting agency that the maximum of grant that could potentially be awarded would be $50,000, and that we would have to purchase a bus off an approved list. So we are going to recommend moving the grant expense from the $120,000 figure back down to $50,000. And we would bring that back to you when we head into the first reading of the budget. Any questions on the senior center items before I would move to the next item?
Questions on that senior center, page 178. If not, go ahead, Mr. Lyons.
Fleet Services, Mr. Hyatt had asked that the parts supervisor be converted to a preventative maintenance technician. Our employees are required to provide their own hand tools. We do provide a $500 per year allowance for that. We left that $500 amount off. We would request that we would put that back in. Be happy to answer questions on that one item.
Why don't we go through these, let's see, well, there, Fleet Services, any question on that? Go ahead.
Parks and Recreation, we have historically budgeted $4,000 for training our part-time personnel. It shows up on that part-time employee listing. We inadvertently left that line blank, so we would recommend putting that $4,000 back in for training our part-time employees. Happy to answer questions on that one.
Go ahead.
Next, the golf budget. Well aware that Mayor and Council received a good deal of feedback about the recommendation about the golf course. And so what we've attached to my memo here is a alternative golf budget that would continue operations as they currently are at the VA. You'll recall that we had two full-time employees that should we, had we ceased operation, we were going to move to Old Fort, so those two employees in this budget come back to the VA budget. So we've, my memo there, I tried to very quickly summarize for you the revenue and expense changes. As, you know, we've discussed at the previous meeting, you know, the city certainly has tried for many, many years to reach an agreement with the VA. The last time we were in negotiations with them, the city felt that the appraisal that was done on the property that showed the land was worth $1.9 million was a figure that we could work with. The VA in Washington had chosen to look at a figure of $18.5 million. We were very far apart on the finances. The VA has indicated to us that they would like to continue, restart negotiations, and we'll certainly be glad to have those conversations, but that issue about valuation is certainly going to be key to that. But we understand, you know, there's a number of folks in the community who wish to see the VA continue. So we have provided to you a budget that would continue the VA operations. One change that we did plug in there to help close some of the funding gap would be a recommended increase of $1 per round at the VA. Mr. Wilkins and the Golf Commission had actually recommended a $2 increase at Old Fort that we didn't talk about last week, but want to make sure that was out on the table as well. So do have an amended budget for you. I'd be certainly happy to answer any questions about either the amended budget or the rate increase.
Questions for Mr. Lyons?
Mayor, just to go from the Golf Commission's standpoint, I know that we've all received several comments and several phone calls and emails. And I think from the Golf Commission, I don't think it was a thing that we went in and all the members went in to shut the VA down. That was not the, the main goal, but the goal was to try to find something that would be revenue-neutral for the city and the taxpayers, and to be able to, you know, answer the taxpayers. But had several people comment about the recreational opportunities that they get out of the VA, and I don't disagree with that one bit. So, you know, I think that we've looked at over making the VA more than what it is, but I think what we're hearing from the public, that they're happy with the VA the way that it is, and as a city that we just continue to operate moving forward. So thank you to staff for helping work out on this. I would like you to address something that we've talked about, different items where we have, like water and sewer, we have our, our human resources manage their payroll. So there was a, some confusion about how that it's budgeted with, with different funds when you have different people at different locations operating. Could you sort of explain that, how that that works?
Certainly, I'd be glad to. You know, we have We have had the two golf courses and have prepared separate budgets for those two golf courses. As I just mentioned, the VA golf course just has two employees. They've got a shop manager and a lead groundskeeper outside in addition to a few part-time positions, but the fact of the matter is, is that is part of an overall golf department, and that overall golf department is served by Mr. Wilkins and three other full-time staff members that spend part of their time supporting the VA golf course. So since they are providing support to the VA golf course, it would only be fair that the VA carry its fair share, so a portion of, four employees or five?
There's actually five.
Five employees' time is allocated to the VA golf course because Mr. Wilkins spends part of his day helping out and dealing with the VA golf course. We have employees that pay bills that support the VA golf course. We allocate part of that employee's time. Mr. Beckham, who's, you know, responsible for growing grass out there, he is the brains behind what we do out at the VA golf course, so all of those employees, because they contribute a part of their time, it's fair to allocate that to the VA. Conversely, if we didn't, then the Old Fort Golf Course would be carrying all of that weight, and the VA would be getting a free ride, so that is typical, as I mentioned earlier in this meeting, that we allocate costs to try to be true and representative of what it actually costs to run that operation.
I think it's good to see that we reconsidered that with petition that we all received, I think it was $1,004 people that wanted to keep, so it's good that we looked at that again.
And Ms. Harris, thank you. We, you know, we want to try to be responsive. At the heart of this issue is going to be compensation for where we are at at the VA. If the VA, you know, wants to allow us to continue to be out there on a short-term lease, and they don't mind and we don't mind, then the VA will need to stay about like it is. We won't be in a position to fund any kind of major improvements. However, if we can somehow reach a consensus about what a fair valuation is that would, you know, enable a longer-term arrangement, then that's something we would have to bring back to you. The fact of the matter is, we've got a repurified line that goes past that golf course, and there may be an opportunity, since water and sewer is hunting locations, to dispose of wastewater, that that may be an excellent opportunity to, you know, irrigate that land just like we do Old Fort Golf Course, so there may be another opportunity that, you know, really wasn't present when we were in the middle of the negotiations last time that could be a benefit to another city department. So we'll be happy to sit down with the VA, but that is going to be, you know, critical to the, you know, future is how do we deal with the valuation. We've tried and tried. I never felt like $18.5 million, which was the number the VA wanted, was a fair and reasonable number, so we'll sit back and see where we're at. I'm not sure who we'll be dealing with, but we'll be glad to have those conversations, but that certainly is going to be an important factor. So I think the city has operated in good faith for a very long time to try to make this deal work, and it was certainly a little frustrating for it to be portrayed that, you know, we were the party that was causing this not to happen. We want to see something happen. We know it provides a need in the community for our golfers. We know it provides a recreational opportunity. That's why Mr. Wilkins, when he showed you his CIP, he had an opportunity for a training facility that was going to be a low-cost, affordable golfing experience for maybe folks who were brand-new to the game of golf. It was the idea that we would grow the game of golf, and the VA certainly filled that mission in our community, and we know it's important, so we'll continue to work hard, but we did show you the budget that would allow the VA to be open this year.
Mr. Gilli.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to commend what a good example this is of how this entire budget process works. I mean, it just shows the process being successful. The reason we have these sessions and present the budget is so that we can get information out on the table and then get response and feedback from the members of the public, and then take that into consideration before we ever make any final decision. And again, this is just an example of how well that process comes together.
I also would like to commend city residents, county residents, and those who use the VA Hospital, which is not in the city limits of Murfreesboro, for their, the way that they have approached the council, and I would like to say to all of those folks that now it's your turn to lobby the other side, just like in every issue, there's two sides to it, and your lobbying efforts have certainly let this council know that you are interested in the city side, but there's a federal side to this issue. The city has provided golf on the VA property for at least 20 years. The city has done that. We have done it without really being able to have much certainty of what the future might provide from the VA, and I'm proud of our local cooperation, and our conflict is not at the local level. It's not our local VA administrators, so I don't want anybody to approach them about it, but I want you to think about, obviously, our congressional representative. Remember, we had a long-term congressperson who really worked hard on this issue, and we got no results, and we've got a new congressperson now that can represent us, and I think, obviously, she is someone who can be reckoned with. At the same time, I'd like to ask our local residents not only to help us lobby the VA, and we're going to be meeting with Representative Black's people and with the VA people, and we'll try to provide you information of where you can make your wishes known publicly and privately to those individuals who might be working on this project, but you also will help us, and I really would hope that you would understand why we need to raise the fees out there, at least a dollar a round, to get them more representative of what it costs to run that particular facility and keep it in the condition that it is. I talked to, I mentioned, a lot of city folks and people from counties all over this country this week as I was doing an economic development trip to the Shopping Center Congress in Las Vegas, and one of the things that every public sector person said is that nobody wants to pay the bills, but nobody wants to live in a place that's not a good place to live, and that's the thing that we're faced with as a council, is making this a great city and making sure that the dollars and cents meet. So I would vote to approve a one-year continuation of this while we consider what the VA wants to do with their property. I understand they've got their own rules and regulations, they have to treat us like they have to treat everybody else in the country, and if that's excess property and they figure out they can't let us have it, or there's a valuation difference, then we should be able to discover that during this next year. So even though I'm really not particularly pleased about the progress that we've made, say, in the last 20 years, I will vote to approve a one-year contention, a continuation, but it's with the condition that everybody understands, we've been lobbied, now it's turn to lobby everybody else that has a say in what goes on. So I appreciate that lobbying effort. I can listen, I can hear, so let's see if anybody else can. I think the city has been more than magnanimous, our staff has been. I appreciate this council listening, and let's just see if anybody else will listen. All right, any other potential budget amendments?
I think I've already mentioned Mr. Whitakers, which was number five on my memo. We've already discussed number six, cable TV, and then number seven, Mr. Young, did send me a request for $2,500 for the Murfreesboro City Schools Foundation. That's an all-volunteer foundation that does directly benefit the city department, so, Mayor, we didn't need any formal recommendations at the meeting this afternoon, this evening, but did want to make sure if those were the changes you wanted to see thus far, wanted to be clear about where budget stood, and if there was any other changes you had after your discussions with the rest of the departments today, certainly this would be a good time for you to tell staff what else you want to change.
Council members need to meet with Mr. Lyons individually if they have other changes. Certainly, he's going to be checking on the cost of your recommendation and what might be entailed there, Ms. Harris, so there may be other things that council want to talk to staff about regarding potential budget amendments, and if you'll do that with Mr. Lyons or any other member of the staff, I'm sure those will get proper consideration. Anything else?
Mayor, one just quick comment. I did attach for you an updated pay study. We had some of the data in from MTAS when we had our first budget meeting. Mr. Crumley received some additional information. There's now 23 cities on the survey. Out of those 23 surveyed cities, Murfreesboro's 3.5% across-the-board increase is second only to Kingsport, which recommended 2% across the board, and then up to 1.6% merit pay, so there could be some employees in Kingsport that could get 3.6%, but for the rest of the communities that were surveyed, we are at the head of the class. I know that's something we are all very proud of, but did want to provide to you the updated information on the pay study.
Mayor, I'd also like to add that we intend to advertise the budget in the public hearing for the budget to be June 9th, and that ad will be going into the paper this Sunday, so it will go based on the budget document we've been discussing without the changes, and then those changes will be made after the public hearing.
All right.
So just make sure we're clear on that. A resident who would pick up, I was getting a sense that the council agreed with the change on the VA budget, so when they would see the advertisement for the ad for the VA budget, for instance, they're going to see the two-month operation figure, but we're getting the sense, and I'm seeing heads nod, that you're looking at a 12-month full operation, so even though the ad's going to be out of sync with what we, I'm hearing you say, we do that so that if someone wanted to come in and take a look at this document or the document that's online, the ad matches this document, we'll make the changes and any others that you want to make after the budget public hearing.
So when will the first vote on the budget document be? That June 9th?
June 9th.
Yes.
All right. Any other, did you have something, Ms. Harris? I'm sorry.
Yes, I would just like to commend you, Mr. Lyons, and your entire staff for an excellent, excellent job on the budget, tireless hours, I know, and just want to commend you and your entire staff.
It was a team effort, department heads, their staffs, the folks you see sitting at this table, Ms. Tucker, who is on a well-deserved vacation. It has been a true team effort, and, you know, it starts with you all. You set the tone and the tempo for us from day one when we start budget, and it is appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Harris, I know all the council members join you in that. Thanks. Anything else before we go to our consent agenda? If not, any questions regarding the consent agenda?
Mayor, I move for its adoption.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Also, I want to thank those long-suffering city employees who are still sitting out here, who still have things before the council. I assume that's why you're still here, so I do appreciate your longevity of service this afternoon. On third reading, we'll consider for passage and final reading an ordinance to rezone 15.5 acres to highway commercial CH District, 13.4 acres to residential multifamily 16RM16 District, and 12.9 acres to single-family residential 15RS15 District along Warrior Drive and New Salem Highway.
So moved.
All right, motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to rezone Creekwood Subdivision located west of South Church Street to a duplex residential RD District.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Planning Commission to schedule a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 163.2 acres from PRD to RS10 and 80.9 acres from PRD to RS12, total 244 acres located north of Kimbrel Road and west of Barfield Road, including River Oaks West PRD, River Edge PRD, and River Downs Annex PRD, and also the approval to serve 3819 Florence Road as an outside-the-city sewer customer. Ms. Adelot, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. These two items will require separate motions. The first is during its regular meeting on May 18th, the Murfreesboro Plan Commission considered and recommended approval of the following matter, and that is a zoning change request to rezone approximately 163.2 acres from PRD to RS10 and 80.9 acres from PRD to RS12, as you read earlier. This needs to be scheduled for a public hearing.
All right, Ms. McGannon.
Mayor, I would suggest June 23rd.
June 23rd.
I believe that we set the public hearing for June the 23rd.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and second. May I have just a moment to consider? My personal brain. Yes, just want to see where in the country I'm going to be. Okay. Have a motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Additionally, the Plan Commission considered a request for annexation or any alternative sewer services to an outside-the-city sewer customer for property located at 3819 Florence Road owned by Mr. Roy Lee Waldron. After discussion of the matter, the Plan Commission unanimously approved the request for the property to be served as an outside-the-city sewer customer in accordance with the requirements of Murfreesboro City Code, Section 33-2.1.1, and that the property not be annexed. No public hearing will be required in order to approve this matter. I would add that this was a result of a failed septic tank, and sewer was available adjacent to the property. We had him hooked up as soon as he was willing to complete the paperwork so that there would not be an environmental problem, and this is just taking care of the details.
Is there a motion that we approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Adelot. Now, we'll consider recommendations of the Water and Sewer Director regarding emergency purchase and repair of Headworks auxiliary power at the Sinkin Creek wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you, Mayor. During this recent storm, the auxiliary power to our Headworks building, the main switch, was damaged, and Thompson Power has provided us an estimate to make that repair, and we recommended, Mr. Lyons, that we proceed with that and do haste because of the turnaround time of that and the need to have the Headworks building go to auxiliary power automatically during storm events. The total cost is $9,675, and this is just a report to the council that expenditure. It is under repair. We've got the parts, and they had them laid out the other day, so I think we're close to getting it fixed.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
This time, we'll consider recommendations of the City Attorney with regards to the revision of the Employee Handbook, Section 1025 hyphen Retirement.
Mayor, members of the council, you had in your pack at the proposed revision of the Employee Handbook section and received subsequently and separately the cover letter explaining what those changes were. As you all know, we changed the approach to have a retirement program that differs from the former pension plan for current employees. This was not reflected in the Employee Handbook, nor was the benefit that you added to the pension plan for employees who were single at the time of their death, so part of the re-
So moved. Second.
All right. You have a motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
This time, we'll consider recommendations of the city attorney with regards to the revision of the Employee Handbook, Section 1025 hyphen Retirement.
Mayor, members of the council, you had in your pack at the proposed revision of the Employee Handbook section and received subsequently and separately the cover letter explaining what those changes were. As you all know, we changed the approach to have a retirement program that differs from the former pension plan for current employees. This was not reflected in the Employee Handbook, nor was the benefit that you added to the pension plan for employees who were single at the time of their death. So part of the revision was necessary in order to make it accurate and descriptive, so part of it is housekeeping. Another part of it is an actual change, and that eliminated a provision that called for an increase in the hourly or annual rate that employees who were running out their benefit hours towards retirement got when there were, as there is this year, an across-the-board increase as opposed to the step increases. So you had attached not only the proposed revision, but also the existing provision so you could compare. Mr. Godwin has reviewed this for accuracy as far as HR is concerned, and he and I recommend it to you.
Any questions regarding this revision of the Employee Handbook?
No questions, Mayor. We approve the recommendation.
All right. You have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
All right. At this time, we'll consider any beer permit requests. Ms. Wright?
Mayor, we have a few tonight. We have a restaurant at 1935 South Church Street that has met all of our requirements. We have a special event by the Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce. That event is in June at 8:20 North Thompson Lane. And then I have three others that have not finished their building codes inspections but are anticipated to do so before we meet again. One is a convenience store at 144 Casey Lane, Suite A, and that is a new location. And I have ownership changes for a restaurant at 544 North Thompson Lane, Suite E, and 1968 Old Fort Parkway. And when those have met their building codes inspections and been successfully passed, I'd like permission to issue those, and everything else that I presented has met our requirements.
All right. These appear to have met all the requirements or will. Is there a motion we accept the beer permit?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
You have before you a list of the payments and statements to be considered. Are there any questions regarding these statements to be considered for payment?
Here you go. We move, move, we pay the bills.
Second.
All right. Motion to pay the bills. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
This time, I'd like to recommend reappoint Ron Crabtree, Dennis O'Neill, Barry Smotherman, and Madeline Scales-Harris to the Cable Television Commission.
Move for approval. I'll second myself if I need to.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Any other business to come? Mr. Richardson.
Now you know why I stayed. I do have one matter before you, and I think this was handed out on your desk, very much a procedural matter, dealing with FTA Section 5303 Funds Minister T.DOT. Last year, y'all approved a contract for the 2009 grant. Last week, you approved a contract for the 2010 grant, and the Department of Transportation